I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so things are over, ready. Anybody have any conflicts of interest on the agenda? Otherwise, I'll not approve. Adam O'Neal, would you please read the minutes of our previous meeting?
November 12th, 2024, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 a.m. with Jean Higgin, Chair Presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved termination of Greg Miller, EMA Director, EMA. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the following resolution. Resolution 2024-35, Crawford County's semi-annual inspection of all bridges in the secondary road system. Voting aye, Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg, motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the cell phone policy not to exceed $45 per phone with Department head approval. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the weed commissioner job posting. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Schultz, to approve the allow-disallowing farm credit adds and deletes as presented 2024 tax year. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Schultz, to approve certification of the cost allocation plan. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to approve credit limit increase for Roger... Oh, sorry, to improve the credit limit increase to $5,000 for Roger Raspus. And motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at 10:51. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse for Friday, 4:30 p.m., preceding the next meeting.
All right, sounded good to me. Sign that somewhere here. Where do you want to sign it? Way up here? All righty. Standing committee meetings by the supervisors. Does anybody have anything really exciting they want to start with? I will start a little bit.
You go ahead. Let's have something really.
Well, not really, not really. Don't be a day worse. I have to wait to be picked, so. We had our meeting, that first one with the rural housing last night at 4:00 at City Hall. It was well-attended, you know, the hospital was there, Jeff Horr. Gosh, I can't think, but it was quite a few people willing to put their input on what we were doing.
CDC, I'm sure.
CDC was at the head table. Professional PCS, they had a representative there. Hospital pointed out that they, at one point in time, ended up purchasing a home over in Dow City to try to find a place for people to come. It's a true... And I was thinking it was possibly for the whole county because it says rural housing. And I thought that the survey and study would look at vacant lots in the smaller communities as well as Dennison. There was talk of the uptown apartments above the buildings. But what we did, Region 12 was there, Carla was there from Region 12 to kind of help us, guide us through what those questions really mean, meant, and what they were looking for in that. But what I took from that a little bit is there is money available, you know, for projects. We just have to reach out more to Region 12 and see what they have and how we can do it. So what thought it spurred me to have is maybe we should have a coalition that looks after how we can help these smaller communities with rehabilitation, with blight, with filling in lots, you know, possibly like Manila did, giving those lots to somebody that's willing to build and turn them into taxable properties rather than I.S.O.R.s. So I think that I will call over to Region 12 and see what Carla might have for the county, that we can just kind of get something out there, whether it be through our meetings here, letting people know, or taking it back to your smaller communities, maybe even going to, you know, some of their city council meetings and making them aware of, you know, you have to kind of ask for things, you have to realize what the problem is. But it was a good meeting, well-attended. So I think I'm gonna maybe call Carla and tap into that a little bit and see how we can get the word out that there is money available. You have to...
So Region 12, I should know, do you send a newsletter or anything to the city councils or mayors?
You should know that. It doesn't seem obvious that they do because we just don't have any mails.
But we get different... But we think all the cities would be part of it. I don't know that, though. I don't know who gets it.
I don't, I don't know either.
Well, this is the only, this particular form that we filled out last night. The questions were about hornets, empty lots, uptown available apartments, the need of Dennison.
See, we were all part of that housing study.
Yes, you were.
So Dennison's taken that and moving forward.
Right, right.
And that's fine, I get it, they're...
But didn't the county do it to represent the...
Every other.
All the other series and stuff.
Well, there's pictures in that study from August of 2018 that I went to pick up of properties other than in Dennison. So at that time, they identified the needs in Celestine, the populations in the smaller... I just happened to...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that it was a whole county assessment. It's just that Dennison has actually taken that information and doing something with it. The way it sounds to me that we maybe need to have a, oh, you said, Gina, some push for the other communities to...
And part of our involvement at the time, if I remember right, was Pecosa, Ricketts, or Buck Grove, or some of the smaller... Any of them couldn't come up with that funding themselves to do an individual study. But you're right, if we could...
The problem is, is that the study right now is outdated, you know? And I'll just go right here, too, because I know exactly where it is. But I did pick from that that, as we all know in our smaller communities, there are houses that the people that live in it just don't have the money to put on a new front door or new windows or whatever. Dennison had that program for the $24,999. They still have money left for two more projects. And but it's a matching kind of a deal, and these smaller communities don't have that match. And that's kind of where that problem comes from. So I say I got Peggy on, she would maybe know.
I, that newly formed Charter Oak Development, D.O. might be... It kind of circumvents the bureaucracy of government to maybe make some of this stuff happen easier, maybe.
Well, I just think that...
I mean...
Maybe if we had Tammy come to one of our supervisor meetings and kind of vet what she has out there to get the conversation started a little bit. And she'd probably be more than glad to do that.
I kind of wish Jessica would have at least invited all of our small community mayors just to see what's going on. But a lot of them weren't even mayors.
What that would look like for each one of the smaller towns.
I mean, so I think, you know, because like I said, this is a great bunch of mayors right now. They're very engaged, from West Side to Celestine, Charter Oak. I mean, even Dow City, he's kind of quiet, but he's very interested in what's going on. I mean, and obviously Gaskell's always full steam ahead on whatever he's doing down there in Manila. So I mean, it's a great bunch there, but they just, you know, it's a part-time, 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 part-time job. So you don't really know what you don't know.
Right, exactly.
But even if you came in as a, you know, go-for-everything mayor, the money has to be there.
Sure.
You cannot come in, you know, steamrolling, and it's, you know, the money's just not there. And so it's even more frustrating.
And that's like Development Corp. I think maybe a lot of it, maybe some of these other towns have them, but they're available for grants more than what a city is.
Right, right.
To where if they bring them in, they could maybe back fund some of these things through grants, so.
If you don't, if you don't mind, I'll bring something up. You know, what we've got to do with each of our small communities is to basically form an EDO, which is an economic development organization, which would be like these small-town CDCs. And if they get these EDOs, then they can apply for things on their own, for the most part. But Paul and Stephanie actually went to a development thing in Omaha this week. It's our national, like what I went to last June, but it's the national one. And it was actually in Omaha this last week, so them two went down.
Stephanie sat right next to me.
Yeah.
And so there was a good showing of people interested in what we can do because their businesses are determined on whether they can get housing for these people that they need for their businesses. Even Ty, like, you know, just, they were there, listening, trying to figure out what they can do to bring people in, you know? So it's a good, good meeting. I just, I just took from that, maybe we need to help those smaller communities with something similar. So if we look at this report that we helped pay for back in August of 2018, I don't know if we used any of the information that we paid to gather, but there is information about each one of our little communities in Crawford County, what their population was, what the lack was, what they anticipated our population to be in 2025. I think they projected it out that far. But I don't know if we used that information that we paid to gather.
Definitely.
So now we're getting together again for almost that same, same reason, and the need is still there. But the problem is, they pointed out something that's going on in Storm Lake where contractors coming in and building these different... And I actually, it was being passed around what's on Facebook about them. But there are people, you know, wondering, you know, where this financing is coming from and who's, you know, is that really what they need, you know, some of the chatter was. But I just think we need to get the word out to these smaller communities that if we, we just have to go out and ask for it, is basically my take. Like, you've got to get Region 12 involved, you got to figure out what grant money's out there. Because I just think that there isn't the money for families to put new windows in, and they're paying out the, for their utilities because their windows are bad. Even when I went door-to-door, some of the front doors were just in the front porches or, you know, but I understand there's just not that money out there to take care of it. And so...
Most of your money's going to subsistence right now. It ain't going to a luxury.
So then my next meeting was the Wellness Center, if there's anybody driven by that lately. They got a payment coming due of about $2,364,000. Don't write that down. Pretty close, though. And so it's really moving along.
Two plus a million, how's that?
But that's kind of...
Kind of looks like it's gonna be.
Yeah, they're hoping to get it buttoned up so they can start working on the inside of it. And monogram, you know, the naming rights thing is kind of coming up and things like that. So, yeah, that's coming along. That's kind of what I've been up to a little bit. Yep, see, that's what they went by, took pictures of. Yeah.
Somebody swore that, for the county to facilitate, could we ask Region 12 to come over? And if we could host a meeting amongst the nine old communities?
Which we do have.
You got to start.
You got to start it.
Our League of Cities.
We're kind of waiting for Paul Plumb and Chris Whitaker and Jessica to kind of... Paul told me last, at Rotary, that he was gonna, kind of, now that everything is done, barbecue fest, work with Chris on getting that meeting set up for our communities. Which I said in that email, I would like to focus on these housing programs as the meat and potatoes of our meeting, and then let it go from there with questioning.
We just know that's just what Charter Oak's doing, just because it... I don't know, but I think they're trying to focus on these dilapidated vacant houses now. So I think that their focus is...
But it goes back to...
From what I've seen and heard.
We got to make our communities presentable, another one. It's also got to be a safe and efficient community.
There you go, that's...
And I think, I think the housing thing, along with the economic development, it isn't a chicken or the egg. It's a chicken and the egg, they're both in the house at the same time.
Yeah, because you have to have a place where you're...
You got to have a workforce, and then you got to have a place to house the workforce.
The complaints were that, you know, when somebody first moves into town to come work at PCS or the hospital, they a lot of times have to drive quite a distance or not. And they just want to have more available so that they can bring good qualified people in.
You know, I was actually, it was Fox Business one morning I was watching, and they had a commercial pop on where these people do these, like apartment-type buildings, you know, multifamily.
Yes.
Like multi-differentized bedrooms even. But it was a prefab thing. And right now, it's so hard to get stuff built, you know, to do a stick or, you know, steel substructure. But these are all prefab, and they come and they get put together. I mean, and it's more, they're more cost-effective because of that.
Stick built in a factory.
Yeah.
Oh, that's like Home for Iowa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, someone, but this is apartment building, you know? I mean, or it could be like a condo-type apartment.
Yep, well, Mandy Hartwig is part of that housing committee in Dennison. And her husband, they own a couple of park houses, and he can also listen to construction, but just can't. For what it would cost to build apartments, the rent would be too high for the person. Because the survey that some of these businesses went out to the people, what would you want to pay for an apartment? They thought maybe between $650, $700. Can't build it for less than $850 a month is what you're gonna have to get. That's been added. So there's a difference between low to moderate and working class, you know? The difference, you know, low to moderate. That's a tough one, how do you subsidize all that?
Jean, that is a tough one because just in Manila, we are sitting on a Homes for Iowa home, and the new addition that has not sold yet. And we are sitting on two Region 12 condos, where the old playground area, the school.
Think that's interest rates?
I know they're interest rates supposedly coming down. I think it's, you know, it's just, you do run into those times where, we've been sitting on them for quite a while now. They haven't been able to move them.
So at that, at this point in time, whose money is stuck in that city of Manila?
What's that?
Whose money is wrapped up in those projects?
Region 12's.
Region 12's?
Region 12's money is wrapped up in some of our projects.
You know, you think between interest rates and the fact that people just don't have disposable income, right?
And those are very, very nice homes and condos, but they're also kind of in that window of, ooh, they're...
Are they $250, $50,000?
They're around that, between $200, $250. But what, you know, it just gets to where, that's what they cost, even at a Homes for Iowa that is discounted.
People with a free lot.
Built home with a free lot.
Wow.
But and the whole idea of the program isn't necessarily to make money, but it is to break even or make a little money so we can roll it into the next housing, into the next housing project.
I can roll down that number, but I think that's pretty close.
A little bit of it is that, you know, taxpayer dollars, a lot of people say, well, I can pay for my house. How come my taxes haven't helped and came from yours, you know?
But then like Kyle and I went to the Derelict Building Program years ago, and what happened after that? I don't know very many that it actually utilized.
No, because they had to be in ownership of the... Did they, did they have to be in ownership of the cities to take that, or...
Or the owner had to sell it over, I mean, there were steps they had to jump through to get there, but...
I mean, personally, if it was my building, then I would have, like, graduated, signed it over to the city. But, you know, some people are like, it's my building, leave me alone.
Yeah.
Type thing, so you got to have buy-in for that, too.
Buy-in on the city giving things away.
I had a young family over in Charter Oak actually come to me about it, and I referred them to Peggy. And they've been talking. But I don't know what, I don't know what's the meat and potatoes of the program, you know? Because we haven't had that meeting yet, so I don't even know what, you know, what are the particulars?
I used to know the meat and potato of the program.
But I do think Region 12 has seen a lot of success, and maybe they built a lot of homes.
Yes.
Brought in a lot of Homes for Iowa, built a lot of homes, refabbed a lot of homes.
Carla was very knowledgeable on, you know, what they have, what, you know, where the match is. And I think that maybe we just need to have that, have her come and lay it out for us. What would it, what are these programs that are out there? You know, how long are they gonna be out there? What's the, what's the pro and the con of that program? You know, the city has to put in a match. There's where that stops, right there. City doesn't have the match, that program's out. All right, customer has to have a credit score of at least 760 and 20% debt, you know?
If they could get 760, they probably wouldn't be looking through a special program.
I lived it for many years of trying to fit, you know? And then what would happen is, you know, USDA had a program, and then the next year they wouldn't have it, or they added an extra fee to it, or, you know, a different little qualification. And it'd take two months to get a home loan closed because you just had every kind of, I don't know. But that was what I did last, last night, so that's all I wanted to say. So who's next?
Well, thanks for being there last night. I was invited to go, but I was kind of occupied.
It wasn't funny at all. While we were there, the lights went off in City Hall. I mean, so luckily, they have a great generator that kicked in.
Harson, too.
Yeah, yeah, I could hear it when I... Because there were so many people there that I had to park down by the fire station, so...
You know, when that power out?
Pool.
Pool, and then there was, there were two poles hit last night.
It was in your email.
Because there was no, well, soon as I got down the highway, there's no lights to tell you when to go and whatnot. And it poured down rain, and I don't know. It was interesting because when I walked from City Hall down, it was just dark and could hear all these buzzing. Anywho's, that's all I did. All right, you haven't started for a long time, have you? Please don't say it was last week.
No, it's been months.
All right.
I didn't really have much last week. Today, I am sitting in on that Board of Health, Board of Supervisors webinar at 12:00.
Oh, oh.
So registered for that. Got Wissent Community Action meeting tonight at 5:30, and then Hungry Canyon's meeting Friday at 10:00. Me and Paul are going down to that. So busy week this week, not so much last week.
Good.
Did you say anything?
Over to Kyle.
Last week, really not much. I was supposed to go up to Cherokee, but then I had a special meeting Friday, so I came to that. I figured it was probably more important to have a seated sheriff than go up to that, so... But I have been spending more time over at the city, the Crawford County Community Services Building here. And I was over there yesterday, and I was over there today. And yesterday, it was a full slate of contractors working there. I think the whole crew was there yesterday, between the electrician, the heating and air conditioning guys, and the carpenters were there yesterday. Stepping on each other, which was nice to see.
Yep, ceilings getting...
And I go over there this morning again, and the lights are about all in on the basement. Finishing a lot of electrical stuff, getting finished up down there.
Just seemed like it...
Heating and air conditioning is getting, I can starting to see whatever spaghetti lines hanging down through the ceiling. So, yeah, we're getting there.
They getting all the junk out of there really gave us a, you know, almost like a horizon of...
And I talked to, then I called Corey Gaskell. He's, you know, gonna be in with the IT and the cameras and all that stuff. And he plans, I wanted to see what his process was, he wants to be there. I just had a, he had a guy there yesterday working, but he said he wanted to be up there like the end of this week to really get going on the IT side of it.
Great.
So I came and talked to Jake, said, you know, we're getting to the point where we'll be waiting on you eventually, or very soon, as far as you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, so he's gonna get, Jake's gonna get internet to the building probably the end of this week so we can start getting all that stuff fired up and ready to go, so...
His room is ready for him. The floor is in, the mini splitter's in, the electricity's there.
Yeah, I think you could start, that's why I kind of got ahold of Gaskell, is I think you could start putting that room together, you know? Saying you can close the door and whatever, keep dust down to a minimum there, so...
And that is...
I mean, there's still a little work that needs to be done, but I think everybody could work with each other there at this point. I mean, I even just basically have a few ceiling tile that need to be popped in there yet. Way luck to me, but I could, I could start working together on that, the way I see it, but... And I did get, take the electrician up and showed him where the outlets need to be upstairs again this morning, so... And they were aware of it, but I just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, just make sure that, you know, just because the guy that was there last week knew about it, the guy that's here this week, I had not got the memo, and then everybody leaves. I just wonder what we need to do with that sink that's in the hallway.
Uh, throw it out.
I don't know how it got there.
I don't know how it got there either, but I talked to Dave, and if somebody, a couple of us want to go over there and see what... Yeah, we'll just put a pile of stuff that's upstairs that needs to be hauled to landfill.
Yeah.
And Dave will pick it up and in the pickup and haul it out there. Because there's like 8,000 paint cans that need to be put somewhere.
I'll get...
Are they all empty?
No.
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 They're like remnants of the 11 different shades of white that we had to have, or whatever, you know?
The 11 colors that needed to go upstairs.
Do we need to keep that, then?
We kind of do to match, you know?
$70 each, yep, I think.
I think they go in that one storeroom downstairs.
Right, so put them under the staff.
Somebody should mark which room they go to.
I think they are.
I think they are.
Thank God for that.
But I think that next week...
So we get that stuff cleaned up, and we can get your lady in there to be cleaned, so...
There's a lot of paint cans, so.
There's a lot.
That's insane. What the hell were we thinking? Anyway, we were...
That was required, though.
It was very specific in the contract that she was going to paint four colors. Somehow, somebody wanted more colors and nobody wanted to quiet anybody.
Many different shades.
Many different things or what?
You know, many shades.
I think four would be enough, though.
There's 50 shades of gray.
Just saying.
Oh, well, it's, what's done is done, it's moved on.
Just saying.
So I...
Anyways.
It's coming along.
It is, it is, it is.
Fast. Well, I mean, granted, you hope to have people moved in in December, but, you know, that's like...
I was gonna say, you have a different definition of fast.
It was slow, but now it's starting to come along. So you think December, but realistically, probably January, we could probably start getting people moved in there.
You know, though, this last four years with all the crap. I mean, COVID seemed to last for two and a half years, for goodness sakes. I mean, as far as being able to get some...
Some people are still using it as a crutch.
Yeah.
Exactly.
There are still people in the state of Iowa that, even though it was cool to come back, that have not gone back.
I mean, it's just, there's just things that seem like, I mean, it's been frustrating for me, so I can't imagine any of the rest of your difference.
I'm afraid, though, the hole that might be that thermostat, you know, we're still seeing, Dave, we're still seeing to be...
The one that's...
Yeah, the one I got, throw it out. I'm like, it's a thermostat, get one, we're gonna need it. Well, they, Dave said they got to figure out what it's gonna cost. Like, we need the thermostat.
What, oh my gosh.
What it costs, it costs. It costs is what it is.
But here, I was in that room.
We'll deal with it.
And it was junk. Everything in there was...
Apparently not.
And we...
Well, apparently, obviously, it wasn't.
Things that weren't junk, we were, you know, moving...
I took in everything in that room to be disposed of.
Yeah.
That's how I took it, and...
Why would you?
Why would you put it in there? I don't understand it.
It's just one of those little pitfalls, you're trying to go forward, go two steps.
How much is the thermostat?
Well, they said it's gonna be quite expensive, but I can't see...
Is it that unique?
Well...
Does it, like...
The thing is with that thermostat, it's got to trick that, that little unit to get it to cool up to negative 40 degrees outside temperature. Because we had the order, that's why that one costs so much. And I think the cost is probably associated more with that thermostat.
Why in the hell wouldn't they have kept that under closer supervision?
Like, left it in there.
Throw it on the building?
Until they were ready to install it.
I mean, anybody could have threw away, there ain't nothing saying that...
It might not even have been there when we threw things away.
There you go.
And there, there comes another small issue. Everybody in town has a key to that building. It's just amazing. When I was down there the other day, and some, I was wanting to make sure that when they left, they locked it back up. And I said, now, do you have a key, or do I need to come back and lock it?
Chain of custody, I mean, the area is supposed to be responsible.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, you're right, chain of custody, I...
Carroll Control should have insurance for that kind of crap.
Did it fall out of their truck when they came over? Was it sitting on their bumper and they just didn't know?
We just don't know.
I don't know, but we need that thermostat to move forward.
Yeah.
No sense sitting here throwing stones at each other to figure it out.
Yeah, let's not hold the project up anymore.
That is...
Let's not create a new hurdle.
Exactly. It's like, get it coming, we'll worry about how to figure it out later, but...
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we do enough business with Carroll Control. I think we're considered a good customer.
Yeah.
I think we need to, we'll figure it out. That's kind of where that's at, so...
Cool.
I'm good, I'm excited.
Good.
I thought we'd be upstairs before we got the base, the downstairs done, but now I'm beginning to think it's gonna be...
Downstairs will be there first?
I'm beginning to think...
Louise is motivated, though.
Louise is.
She's motivated, and she's making sure that we stay motivated.
And the veterans are motivated.
Yeah, they are.
They really are.
And I'm excited for them, too. I mean, they're gonna be able to make a nice facility for them.
Well, and the good news, that slimy stuff that's on that window is just gonna take somebody that doesn't want to... Well, and the good news, that slimy stuff that's on that window is just gonna take somebody that doesn't wanna get a blister. Or break a nail to, to get that out there.
That wouldn't be you.
I'm going to do it, but I need gloves.
Tell us about the guys on at the Armory that would help out on certain things.
That should be.
That's what they said.
Really, it seems like a job.
Sounds like a great job for a new PFC is what it sounds like.
Seems like a great job for my sixteen year old granddaughter who, uh, owes me gas money.
That's all I had.
Excellent, though. Thank you for.
Things are looking up and thank you.
You guys are doing.
Yes, finally, we're just gonna keep going around the table.
I, uh, we had Rural Action Caucus, uh, just starting to talk about. You know, that, what, what, what's not gonna happen during the lame duck session for rural communities, plus what's gonna happen. What they hope will happen going into the new administration. They did the Senate. Uh, she, uh, really, the part for the ag, for, for the farm committee, or the ag committee, sorry. She, uh, released the ag bill, the Senate ag bill, which, in a lame duck, I, I, I made some calls to our Senate's office and our Senator's offices. They said it's not going anywhere. It's just the same one that couldn't get any traction before, so it's not going anywhere until the new administration and the new Congress is seated. So, the new Congress obviously seats before the, the, the administration will move in, but. With all the stuff they gotta do to get approvals for him, for staffers and all that stuff, you know. They're probably, we're looking mid-spring, when they start really getting hard on it, which. The monies are helping us sufficiently now with just doing the, oh, the, the RC, you know, their. Continuing CRs, our continuing revolutions. So I, I think that's probably what we'll see yet. Uh, some of the things that, you know, we had concerns at this table staying in there. Apparently in this one. I was reading at the brief. I had that sleep study last night, and I about went to sleep at noon, or three in the afternoon yesterday, trying to read through that. That's good sleep time.
It said, beginning farmer stuff?
Yeah, that's all stuff in there. I mean, for the insurances and all that stuff, you know, that stuff's in there, so, I mean, and it's more monies. Now, they want more monies allocated for that types of things, so. That, you know, hey, this one's a couple of years old, Kyle. I mean, so the monies are already short for what we really need. So, I mean, that's why I think you're gonna see, not a complete remake, but you're gonna see some cleanup and additions too. But, uh, and I mean, I guess we'll have to, I don't think this will be anything that, uh, the, uh. What is, what do they call them? Musk and Ramaswamy's little, the cleanup crew, I guess, what I'm calling it. Uh, the, the, dog, 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 yeah. I don't think this is something that they'll get involved in, but. You know, I'm still sitting there trying to make noise for our perspective, and for what good that does us, but I think it don't hurt, you know, cause I'm not. Just talking through NACO, I'm talking to the Senator's offices and the Feenster's office myself, so. So, that's pretty much all that, and, uh, tonight is our task force meeting for, to start the hiring process. For our new EMA. Um, we put together a task force that's actually made of our stakeholders. Public health, hospital, fire, mayors, obviously, and, and then, uh. I'm, I'm gonna be on this part as, as a fill-in, need be. Um, we got five people that are the primary interviewers, and then they'll be writing up the primary interview. Results to present to the commission, and then obviously the mayors and them will be doing the.
How many people are you interviewing? How many people are you?
Well, I believe four, but that, that'll be determined tonight. One person is tentatively polled. For obvious reasons that we actually already know. But, there's, the other one is, uh, I know, just, just some of the vibe I got, I don't think that it, they, they might not necessarily. Bring that one in for an interview, first they're not local, plus a lot of recent jobs, so, I mean, I don't know. I'm, that's the commission's jobs to go, or the, not the commission, but the task force's job to go through that tonight. I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to be, just keep, keep the meeting moving, not necessarily run it. But, uh, the, uh. Got a bunch of questions. Chelsea's Health, Erin gave us some great stuff for a template on how to do a, do it and keep track of everything. Um, Erin Muck, and, uh, she'll have, uh, Sam Polly, I believe, is, yeah, Sam Polly's gonna be the hospital's representative, so. And I, I think it's gonna be a pretty good little, you know, Cory's and I are gonna be there kinda as to back up in case somebody can't make it, you know. But otherwise, every one of our agencies has got representation there in the questioning. We just figured we have, need to have the subject matter experts asking the questions, you know, or probably a wise way to do it. Rest of us will be guessing our way through it, they know what they need to ask about, you know. So, uh, that starts tonight, and we'll see how that goes. I, I have a pipe dream of, by Christmas, we'll have a new AMA director. Hopefully sooner, but I'll see. But hopefully by Christmas, but that first month. I mean, I just, my optimism on doing things quick in this government world anymore is, I always leave myself room, right?
Four years in your stone.
Yeah, so anyway.
Still optimistic.
Yeah, still optimistic.
We could beat you down faster.
The eternal optimist. But anyway, that's, that's pretty much all I've had, you know, I mean, of the way it's been, just working on that stuff. I mean, there's a lot of back and forth with. Chelsea and Amy and, and, uh, some of the mayors that have been really involved in it. I mean, they're, they're, they're really engaged, and they, I think they like the way we're doing this. You know, then they get all the information, throw it at them, and there's no bias of talking with the people personally. But if they wanna do another, a second interview with anybody, we're gonna leave that window open, so.
Very good. That, that's another thing, moving along that, uh, yeah, so. Keep it moving.
Board representative on ISAC Executive Board for Emergency Management. He's from Polk, oh, he lives in Polk County now, as Emergency Management Director there, from Westside.
From Westside originally? Is that right?
A J Ma.
I think, yeah, I think he's actually gave a, a little com, a class or, you know, not necessarily a class, but talked about EMA. And then the new, like, where we can actually put it as its own taxable entity, EMA and EMS, he's the one that talked about that. Very sharp.
Back, close to home.
Yeah, it does. Very sharp villain. Anyway, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Awesome. Gee, you got a minute.
I've got a few things. I had a busy week last week with, um, ISAC, ISAC Superiors affiliate. But like, so, it sounds like we're gonna have at least one week Commissioner applicant came and got. Actually, he called me. He said he is excited to get a stop bid again.
Thanks for looking up.
I did talk to, I was out in Des Moines a couple of days there last week, Sandy Bupkey, Environmental Health from Monona County. She's one requesting our wind turbine, turbine ordinances. Um, Christine, you said that you were talking about a crypto ordinance. I said, what in the world? Does that entail? And she said that Monona County and Shelby County have been contacted by whatever company.
Want to put them boxes in?
Want to put those, basically a data center for cryptocurrency processing.
Mining, mining.
Well, it's either in the mining or just the transfers of whatever bank form, but you said east-west coast can't handle the amount of. Cryptocurrency being used, so they're coming out here because we can handle on our, on our grid. But I, where the ordinance comes into play is that I guess like the lots, sometimes you use shipping containers or big facility, whatever. Are loud, because of all the fans that have to run to keep all the processors cooled. And they're looking at putting in like decimal ordinances or whatever.
I think if you'd use our turbine decimal ordinance, you'd probably be.
I mean, to be fair, you know, you'd try to have to match that decimal.
So I told her, well, that's interesting, cause if it's going in Shelby and Monona, that's our backyard.
Are they going in stand alone, like by themselves in a, at the end of a block, or are they out in the middle of the country?
I think, I have to have a good energy source.
Yeah, I think.
Pretty close to.
Lot of power.
Transmission line. How big are they?
I don't know, I just put private variables on what, what they have for.
I don't know what about, I don't know about the crypto ones, you know, I mean, there's data centers that they're using like Amazon.
Right, but those are huge.
Them are, you know, you've seen them out on the other side of Des Moines, and then that, I think that's what's down there by Council West, just south of town.
But I told Sandy, I said, well, just keep me in the loop, and if you guys do pass an ordinance, send that over to me, and we'll leave something to reference and look at. I just, yeah, caught, caught me, you know, off guard, or caught me in that email when she said.
So what are Monona and Shelby County doing for their ordinances?
They can be kind of temporary.
Decimal numbers in their.
Nothing was finalized or just in that.
In that prospect.
I don't know what the taxable, you know, what, what kind of taxes it generates either, you know, so it's not a big employer. So you, you know, how much of your good industrial or commercial property is getting consumed by this, that you ain't drawing any tax base from? That's things to think about from this table, you know. But, uh, I mean, you don't wanna stop any kind of industry, obviously. Dave, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking on your time, but I did tell her that ours, ours was mainly in that permitting process. And that, that last one that we did was just the permitting, construction agreement type thing, permitting agreement. That's, that's where she can find all of ours.
That's what, we did, I did get that sent to her, so she's got that, and she's appreciative of that. I just interested that those conversations are now starting to come forward.
And it's good to have them, because.
Absolutely.
I mean, when we started with wind turbines, we would have thought that we would have got that involved with that, same with, you know, pipeline, and now cryptocurrency data processing centers.
They do make a lot of noise, and it will be detrimental to some people, I mean. They don't, it don't go away, so you have to listen to that all day and all night.
If it gets to be a draw, and they like to listen to the train go by. You know, at nine o'clock every night, that's one thing, you can kinda learn to sleep through that, but when you get that constant drone. You know, that can, that can be, that can actually be detrimental to people's health.
That was just a side conversation that we had. Uh, we also had the ISAC audit report that was good and passed, Iowa County's Technology Service Audit, that was passed, that was cleared. ISAC is looking at, or ICTS, Iowa County's Technology Service. Because we got, kinda they backpedaled on the funding we were supposed to get from the Department of Management, then they gave to Director Paulson, to Iowa State. And we were kinda counting on that for, using for cybersecurity for all the counties, and then all of a sudden, they left us with nothing. So to kinda bolster technology support from ISAC, they're looking at maybe transitioning into. Um, backup, data backup, and they can do it all in-house. So they're looking to roll that out. I think it's gonna cost a hundred thousand seed money at first, but they think they're gonna be very, very competitive to like. County attorneys, carpal, versus what they're spending for that, like almost a forty or fifty percent discount.
Wow.
Whoa.
And, but then some of our other, like, we could use them, and they said it'd be very, very competitive, maybe not on the other stuff. Less, but better service, but.
Dedicated to the counties.
Dedicated to the county, all in-house. So that's, could be something coming up that I think could be very good, that they'll offer for a service. But it's like, we didn't get this pot of money that Department of Revenue. Right, so we're gonna shift gears and maybe start doing, you know, utilizing what we have, staff to go on that route. Um, we went over the Iowa Group Benefits Program that ISAC offers, which for our home industry, we're not, we're different. But I thought it was interesting, and they, they said, of course, expect the six to ten average cost of insurance year to year increase. That's just gonna be the new norm, but the thing that I thought was interesting where they said doctor visits versus. Prescription drugs, let's say is eighty twenty right now. I think in the next five to ten years, if that's gonna shift, it'd be more fifty fifty. Where pharmaceutical are going up, but not just because of the, the drugs we're getting, but the medication that is. Coming out is gonna be more, I wrote down, gene altering medication. Like, all the R and D is going into medication that maybe like stem cells or something that goes in and. On gene altering, so, I thought, but that's gonna come with a huge cost, so instead of going to see a doctor, they're just gonna give you. Prescribed medication that slowly goes, fixes the problem. We talked to James. Interesting. We talked about our compaction study that phase two is being finalized. Um, we're waiting for the final bill on that. Iowa State, of course, now wants to do a, the phase three. But we said, well, let's get phase two settled up first, that's gonna be a split shared cost between ISACs and ISAG. And some other private partnerships, public partnerships, Iowa State. Phase threes, we'll see what that entails and if it has benefit or not.
That stuff we can use for information that's for everything.
Right, but we said, let's get phase two wrapped up first. ICAP came and visited us and went over some of the insurance costs through ICAP. That was very interesting. Iowa's on the list of undesirable places to live.
Since when?
Not because of the, but he said because of the storms, he said insurance companies are leaving left and right. Um, storms and cyber hacks are raising the cost of insurance very, very fast. Some new terms that have actually come out, they call them kitty cat storms. They're not huge hurricanes, they're not that, but. They're localized, very damaging storms, well, like what the tornado that went through and wiped out Greenfield.
We've always had them, though. I mean, this.
I know, they're not new to Iowa.
They, yeah.
They said, uh, they must have.
Damage.
Cost more than fifty million dollars in this last year. So the cost of these localized storms has gone up.
Well, maybe the insurance companies need to do something that drive, drive inflation down, and the cost of building material.
So instead, they're, they're saying, well, we just can't insure you, so we're just gonna wait.
Yeah, we're just, uh.
The storms continue to cost more because the cost of building materials and repairs costs more.
Right, and it's interesting, but we are the second highest state, we're tornadoes.
Tornado, yeah.
Iowa's, I heard Texas is number one.
I can say Oklahoma.
Don't be proud of the rest of you.
Um, and then currently.
We're third?
ICAP is doing appraisals on county assets right now, and they're running, selecting certain counties and they're putting around. Um, and then the other term, term that came out that has greatly increased the cost of insurance. As they're calling it nuclear verdicts. Where court cases that deem a huge payout. Are costing bottom line, a ton of money.
We, we need to have more caps on this kinda stuff.
So that.
They did that for trucking, which didn't help our insurance rates at all. Iowa passed that, where you can't handle that. And, and I, maybe we need to be holding, the legislation, legislature needs to hold people's feet to the fire.
But just the number, number of things that have, I were seeing increase in insurance cost.
Yeah.
And it's the same reason, we, we got doctors that are quit. You know, insurance costs. That's, it ain't cause they don't wanna take care of people, they can't afford to. Insurance is gonna break the whole country.
We went over.
And it's not their fault either.
We went over, uh, some events coming up, legislative updates. Concerning fact, we only had forty-eight supervisors vote on our projects, our objectives and priorities out of a short four hundred. So we're gonna try to do an initiative to get more involvement, but it's like, hey, you know, these are our objective priorities, that we want them to take with the state. But we had forty-eight, went over, not forty-eight counties, forty-eight individually.
That's crazy.
So, very low, and we're not going affiliate with, a lot of affiliates just did not.
So better chance they have in my priorities, what?
So of that, our top four that got voted on.
Got moved around, right?
Fundings, unfunded state mandates, number one, property tax reform, number two. Um, and with the property tax reform, that's meaning, you know, like with the House files, I'm making to make sure that. We're seeing the revenue, we need to provide the services. We have, we have, uh, number three is Medicaid funding. And then number four is Iowa Natural Resources Water Quality and Quanti Outdoor Recreation, which has always kinda been one of them. And that was all voted on by all the affiliates, and then just approved by the executive board. Um, the other thing that did get changed up, because Mark Campbell lost his election, which opened up some seats on the executive board. John Worden got his, will be president next year, Linda Zercher will be first vice president, Mary Ward from Cass County. Will be second vice president, and I got moved into the third vice president. So, congrats.
Congratulations.
Keep doing the good job, and keep Crawford on the, everybody's tongue.
Uh, ISAC's affiliate, I had that board meet. Uh, ISAC's affiliate, I had that board meeting yesterday, which pretty much all your that covered a lot of the companies that can afford.
Send him first.
Thank you.
I, I want to just touch on one thing that, uh, at the county engineers conference coming up here in a couple of weeks. Uh, there's a, a kind of a group, uh, not an official committee, but talking about utility. Uh, you know, work within right of ways, all the challenges and issues that are occurring. I think right now we're seeing a lot of it because of the, uh, push to get, you know, high speed internet to all the areas. There's a lot of work going on. But, uh, there's certainly room for some reform in that area. And so I offered to sit in on that and can offer some input, but a lot of challenges with utilities and contractors in particular right now. So. Okay, ready for me now?
We are.
Okay. There you go. Those down there. Uh, so I've asked, uh, oh, we'll go through, we'll, we'll, we'll get down to them here. E sixteen, good news. Uh, that should be open later today. Looks really good. Um, we just got to clean up some things, put the pavement markings on later this afternoon. And we're going to open that up to traffic.
Yay.
And, uh, we'll have to seat it on Friday. I talked to Verdine already. He's all excited. He wants to go. I said, just hold off till it dries up a little bit.
Let the mud.
Yeah. So, so anyhow.
You should have good seating conditions.
Yeah, yeah. We're just going to blow on hydro seat, come back in the spring, touch up whatever we need to, we'll get something on there, but it's nice. I could be happy. I, you know, wished it would have been a little earlier, but it's, it's done now. So. And then we've got, uh, the Vale Bridge, which we're going to approve the plans. That'll be let in February. And so that bridge will be ongoing next year. And I don't know when they'll start on it, hopefully right away. Um, but, uh, but anyhow, that's the next project that we may come up. So, so I'm ready to go. The M fifty five, the M fifty five bridge.
Well, let's hope that it gets done in a timely manner.
Well, it's on that side of the county. It'll get done quick. The people up there in the northwest corner are very patient. So, yeah.
Rick is on the phone call, but I can't believe they're very understanding about it.
And I've only had one, um, and that's it to the whole project. So, I mean, it has been very patient. I appreciate that.
Two years in a row of that kind of corridor being held hostage by a rich, licensed project.
Yep. So good projects on paved roads to, you know, be there a long, long.
I understand that as well to, uh, for the long-term solution to your short-term problem.
Yep. So, uh, great crew there up here on J Avenue. And I don't know that we'll get that one done. That's probably in the season. You know, I got a few weeks left there and the weather's looking. Yeah, we've had a great year, both great crew and bridge crew. So wherever we end up, it's a dirt road. Uh, same thing with the bridge crew down on W Avenue. Uh, it's a dead end dirt road, just taking a bridge out, putting a pipe in. Wherever we land, we land, I guess, on, yeah. So, uh, roadside crew again, they should finish mowing tomorrow and then shoot seed on E sixteen and you know, but nothing, but everything away for the season. Good year all around. Yes, another very, very good year for you. Great guys. Really proud of all the projects, what the guys have accomplished in the end. So. Item four, I put this on here as approval item. You don't have to take action if you don't want to. Okay. But I asked Brent to come and, uh, Brett Truckee, who you all know, I think he's been here before. We're going to kind of talk about, you know, time, yeah, you know, these are, these are preemptive purchases that if you want to get the machines on the ground, you know, next season. You need to kind of take action early if you've done this a number of times. But I, I just put it on here, asked him to come down, but if, you know, I'm okay with whatever. I just, just want you to understand that, uh, you know, it takes time to get these things into the queue and get them here. So, you know, and we've got a lot of work to do on budgets coming in December, January.
Are these the ones that we were going to have new wings on?
We'll have new wings on these as well.
And that price.
It's all included.
Paul, you typically come to us at budgeting time with your list of equipment and what's your, and that changes somewhat depending on what may have priority throughout the year or something. These two were, are still at your top of your priorities.
They, they are. And, you know, the two meat machines that will be going out, one has currently has ten thousand, six hundred, the other one has eleven thousand, three hundred. So, you know, they'll be in that eleven to twelve thousand hour range, which is good time to be kind of moving them before you start to have any powertrain issues. So.
That's what we're really nice to give us good trade in value.
Well.
They have been better than they have been in the past. But. Foreign markets are opening back up.
Um, the demand for some good used graders on road work and, you know, just overall is, has picked up. So, you know, good county machines with good, you know, oil sample history, good records, you know, they know what they're getting. So it makes it a little easier to move on our end, which means we can give a little more on your end. So.
I'm in favor of that.
So then we always, you know, get a price from Ziegler and then we'll get a price from mid-country. And we used to have track two on Minneapolis, but they've since closed up shop. So, you know, limited on, you know, people that are willing to buy these machines unless you go, you know, on a a bid situation. Sometimes those are a little, you know, there's no reserve. Sometimes you, you know, you tend to like purple wave. We sold a truck that one time that was a disaster in my opinion.
They don't get with the no limit. That's.
Whatever it sells for, it sells. When you sign out of the line, whatever that machine brings, you're kind of stuck with it. So here, you know, I think this is a good option. It always has been on motor graders or other equipment, uh, and, and trucks included now. We sell at the sale barn and dentists and livestock just have always done well. Uh, it seems like, uh, you know, we have a pretty good reputation, I believe, and, you know, how we care for our equipment. You know, we, we usually run until it's, you know, got some wear on it, but it's been taken care of. And so people recognize that. And it's always been, you know, we bought, bought good value under that, that way of disposing of some of the excess equipment. Motor graders, there's just not a lot of demand here locally for that. So, you know. So, uh.
A little cheaper than last year, right?
It is. It's about two thousand bucks cheaper. So, yeah. And how is that to be? Um, it's the snow equipment. So the, there's a little better discount on the snow equipment this year than there was last year. I know two thousand dollars in the big scheme of things isn't a lot of money.
We have a new V plow on a snow.
No, no, the V plows are okay.
It's wing post and wing.
Wing post and wing. And, uh, you know, we've only replaced about two or three of those since I've been here twenty five years. So it's just time to start gradually over a ten-year period, just upgrade those.
How many hours a year do you put on?
Uh, we'll put on anywhere from eleven hundred to thirteen hundred, depending on the operator of the year. So.
Which puts you, you can get eight to ten years out of a machines.
Yep. So save a couple of thousand on a new one and get a twenty, thirty thousand more on freight in.
That's four thousand dollars, you know, on two machines. So it's, you know, that's going in the right direction, you know?
Yeah.
It goes to the bottom of the list and will space that because, you know, we get a new sprayer.
Honestly, our truck fleet, so our dump trucks, I'll just, you know, if you, our dump truck fleet is going to be really current. Um, you know, we'll have six new Mack trucks because we got two of them sitting in Des Moines that are ready to roll out here over the next couple of months. So they're going to be in good shape for a number of years. Um, and then we've got the two single axles. So really, you know, what we're trying to gear up for is snow removal. That's where, you know, that's kind of your baseline, if you will. Uh, and we have eight routes, six tandems and two single axles. And so those are going to be in really pretty good shape. Um, the motor grader fleet is going to be in really good shape. Um, and, uh, you know, so, so we'll be sitting pretty good.
We'll be kind of within the same window that we usually are for equipment costs in your budget.
Yeah, yeah. I've got a, a, uh, Mack truck, your Mack semi tractor on here too for discussion. Uh, which is something I think, you know, eventually we should take some action on that as well. And then there's the possibility of kind of flipping one of the D six T dozers into a smaller finished dozer. I, we're, you know, we talked about that some this morning here, uh, but maybe wait until we get into spring. See where our budgets add and see how comfortable you are. And that's not anything that we would have to get right now. I don't know what the availability.
I'm going to replace the international one.
We, we, we'd get rid of the international and one of the D six Ts and, and buy a, a smaller finished dozer that would be used jointly with the bridge crew. And this is all part of that, kind of that melding of the, the bridge crew and the construction crew into one, that you'd have a dozer that's kind of fits their need for maybe a smaller finished dozer in and around culverts and bridges, but yet still can be functional on, on a great operation as well. So. So that's kind of what we're looking at for a dozer that down the road.
So with that new skid steer thing and this dozer, it'd be set on the special operations crew, as I call it.
Yeah, I think, you know, there, um, you know, on the bridge crew, we've got the crane, which, you know, it's hard to replace that. That, uh, we bought a long time ago. It's been a really good serviceable unit that we, we had kind of got it really gone or gone through last year. Um, but it's old. It was old when we bought it. And it's, it's been twenty seven years ago.
Probably paid for itself though.
Oh, I bought that for like thirty two thousand five hundred or thirty seven thousand five hundred from a guy down the link.
Paid for itself ten times.
Oh, yeah.
I remember that.
Did you go down there? Yeah, I know there was.
There was a real old crane.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. And I remember it because I kind of lowballed that offer and I thought all weekend long, gosh, I hope he takes this off because we couldn't find one anywhere. And Monday morning called about nine o'clock, said, I'll take your offer. And, you know, we ended up doing that, but they're hard to find because it's the size that is easy to move around. And they can put it on a low buoy, even with the boom extended and all that everywhere in town. You don't have to break it down. If you go to the next size, I mean, this is like a thirty ton crane. You go to that next size crane and, you know, they just don't make that size. So you have to go to a fifty ton or a much bigger crane in the newer models. And then you got to break everything down to counterweights off and it just gets to become a problem that.
The four trips to move what you can do with this one in one.
It, it could be so. But, you know, that's pretty good. The excavator is in pretty good shape. Um, you know, um, you know, you just got to, I mean, the equipment on the bridge crew is in pretty good condition right now too. And our ditching crews, we got a couple of newer excavators, newer skid steer loaders. You know, so there's always equipment needs, you know, we get down the road another year or so, performance pickups are all going to have to be replaced because they'll have about five or six years and they're going to be in that hundred fifty thousand mile range probably.
They already have about that.
Yeah. So, you know, it's just, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. So.
You get your busy.
So it just takes that to, uh, to kind of keep things going. So.
Maybe you should prioritize them truck pickups then, you know, have a.
Uh, I think they're okay till probably another year.
Not prioritizing immediately, but I mean, put them on a list. All right, this one's got the most miles, you know, and move two a year or something.
Usually what we do is replace all three of the performance pickups and then all their pickups get moved down and then the older pickups go to silver. That's kind of what happens there. So we don't get rid of a pickup till it's probably about eighteen or twenty years old. And they still break good weight. Even after that, yeah. So, um, so the semi that I have on here, you know, for discussion is, is something that I think, you know, as we, you know, start talking about that transition, um, keeping a, a good fleet of semi tractors and trailers and, and adding more, you know, maybe having three guys haul, all summer long next summer. So we, we, you know, we're starting to kind of make the shift to more in-house hauling. And I've had Brandon and, and the Drow Mashinger, they've been hauling to stockpiles ever since the gravel haul in.
And the livestock haulers are top shelf, aren't they?
Just thought I'd throw that out there. Pretty good. I would, I would agree. Uh, and so like during the wintertime, Brandon and I have him, you know, on our, on our contract bridge and color projects. The last two that we've done, we'll do this in Vale, we have him haul all the riprap in, stage it close to the project. And then we just have a place item on the, on the contract. So this one that we're going to approve later, you know, it's place riprap and we furnish it. So, you know, it keeps him busy hauling and saves us a little money by having him bring that in. So.
Has the construction industry followed the ag industry where they, these machines that have low hours are becoming easier to sell versus a brand new machine?
Uh, on some cases, uh, I think manufacturers are really throwing incentives to move some new equipment. So it's tough on the interest side of things, how to, to move a lower hour machine versus new when there's, you know, say thirty, forty thousand dollars difference in they're running zero percent or one point nine low interest. So we're seeing a lot of that lower hour stuff in our rental fleet, but not so much in our trade in fleets.
It seemed like the ag industry is kind of going the other way where they're offering the zero percent interest on the low volume stuff.
Yeah. And terrible in use right now. Seven nine nines are used for age.
Just was wondering about that because it seemed like some of these larger operators are giving some.
There will be a lot of equipment.
Pretty good incentives to put two or three hundred hours on machines and they bring that up. That'd be a good opportunity for us to you bring us new maintain and motor graders every year. We'll put a couple hundred hours on any.
I love the thinking, but, uh, fortunately I don't have a lot of demand for low hour maintenance motor graders.
Well, we could do, we could do loaders, whatever. Catapulters, I mean. I know. I think it's important that we keep the motor graders, the fleet current. I mean, it's one of those things. If you want current equipment or if you want twenty year old equipment, I mean, whatever your equipment is, you try to keep that up, you know, some farmers get five year old equipment. They keep five year old equipment around, you know, some have ten, they keep that. That's where they're always at, you know?
You know, though, we've talked about it a lot, Kyle, though, the equipment, the graders and the pick, the dump trucks are our biggest priority equipment. And to keep them to where they're not broke down. So they're actually out working when they're.
Paul said we kind of gear up for snow removal and then whatever else we get done is based off of what we have for snowing removal. I mean, we're one of the few counties that do that.
But I also think too, Paul, you do a good job that we don't go one year that we need all of a sudden five million dollars of equipment and then the next year.
Right.
You're a hundred thousand. You do a very good job of bringing in, here's our top things we really need to have and keep us within that window that we can afford it and even, you know, fiscally conservative year to year.
Yeah, yeah. Planning makes the difference. It, it does. I think that it's important to always stay ahead of it just a little bit because you're right, there's some counties that you, you know, all of a sudden, next thing you know, they're spending five million dollars and they're having to do some sort of bond or something to, to be able to. Six or eight boy. You know, and, and.
Repairs are expensive.
Always been supportive of it too.
So on item number four, what is the wish? We want to have a motion to approve the two cats for the twenty five, they deliver July first of twenty five. Contingent on approval of the twenty six.
I'll move to approve item number four.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
So do you guys have something worked out on the trade in value that you think is?
In process.
Yeah. I mean, I just.
And you'll see what mid-country.
They're both looking at it right now as we speak and they, they won't be available. See, these new ones aren't, you know, this is kind of why I'm wanting to get this done is that, you know, already we're in a delivery where, you know, a lot of times past years we get it March, which is ideal. Because then we're just starting the season, we get them and we get them out there.
Only thing I'd bring it up is it's a lot easier for him to say, well, I can only afford this much on the trade in now that he knows he's got the purchase. I, I mean, we've been working with you forever.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, we're going to swing at them as hard, you know, before or after. And I know it's easy for me to say, right, I'm selling them. But the reality is if you look at our past trade numbers, we've been consistent where we've been on our trades and even gotten the last two times we bought, we've gotten the deals. So we're not backing up on how aggressive we are in trying to get your equipment traded in. So and, and I guess that's me telling you that, uh, I don't know where these are going to trade in at, but I'm going to tell you, we're not going to be at twenty grand in mid-country is going to be a hundred grand, right? We're, we're going to be within dollars of each other. Cause we're going off of the same market that they're looking at. So.
I got to ask.
Oh, absolutely. And it's a, it's a valid question, right? I got the new ones. I don't care about the trade. Actually, I do care about the trades because if I can bring in good trades to sell to somebody else, you know, double commission. So.
See, there you go. All right. We have a motion, a second. We have our discussion. Paul in favor, I. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. That motion has been approved. All right. Then the next one, Paul, you got?
Yeah, I'm going to have, uh, Tim, uh, kind of talk about this one a little bit. Uh, this will be used by the bridge crew and so could have kind of a good introduction and start getting involved. Thanks. Why don't you just come up and talk anymore?
Uh, myself and Uniform, we've been looking at.
Uh, myself and the uniformment, we've been looking at different skid loader trailers for uh, the figure skid loaders that they have on the ditching crew and what we use on the bridge crew and for just regular moving grater blades and stuff like that around. Uh, we've gone to different companies and that for bits. Um, I've also talked to the city rod Olson. He he recommended uh, Topman. They're a wrecked only, they sell direct from the factory, only go not through anybody. So I think that's why we got a better price from them. We're looking at that twenty four foot goose neck with a tilt bed trailer. Um, it's a lot easier than flooring ramps, picking ramps back up, all that stuff, losing the key, all that things.
Less worry about work comp.
Yeah, and you know, the biggest thing is now is what what we have down there is a fourteen thousand pound skid loader trailer that just fit the schedule. And I mean, like, some of the other machines, you squeeze in between the the wheel wells. So, I mean, everything's getting better. We need someone a little bit more newer. We're I've already upgraded some of the parts on our old skid loader trailer that we actually don't really want to keep upgrading on it. We always have to fix the lights and that's every year problems. So we've come up with a solution and this is the one that myself and the other four minutes have looked at. We feel that this is the best deal.
I used that tilt bit of Kyle's that time. Oh, boy, did I fall in love with that. Yes, that's a nice, that's a nice piece of work.
Yes, as as they become more of a mobile, right, crew.
Yeah.
I think the imperative that they have the equipment to facilitate that, you know.
And and right now, we with the skid loader trailer we have now, we're not able to use that to move like the ditching here's skid loader because it wastes too much. Well, this uh, this, you know, solves that problem, so.
So the final purchase price on that is?
Eight thousand eight hundred seventeen and thirty cents.
We don't have anything to trade in or anything?
No. It'll be in this year's budget.
All right. All right.
That way they'll they can get it all ready for spring, be ready to go.
How many pickups do we have with the with the goose neck hitch?
All the foremans have it.
All the foremans are?
Yeah, all the foremans, all the trucks that, anything with a twenty five hundred or two fifty.
All the twenty five hundred, okay, yeah. I'd make a motion to make purchases.
True.
Second.
All right, two seconds.
I want to, you know, give kudos to Tim. I mean, he shopped around, you know, working for that, he sold trailers. And shopped around a few different, a few different, and and, you know, this is the kind of thing that we want to be seen, you know, be doing. Just looking for good value. So I appreciate what he's done.
Thank you for the research and for.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. We have a motion on second.
Good steward of the tax dollar.
I appreciate it.
Eight thousand eight hundred seventeen. All right, thirty cents, thirty cents. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I will call the motion, purchase. All aye or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion's been approved to purchase that uh, goose neck trailer. All right, item six, Paul.
Okay, so these are the, uh, this is the bridge.
Poke yourself in the eye with? Meanwhile.
By the way, I, no, no, I I I.
Little bitty numbers on there.
It's yeah, absolutely fantastic, though. Working good, but I I can't see the prep real good, you know.
It's not bad.
I'm cringing for that across the street. But anyhow, this is the uh, the Vail Bridge all over East Boya River on M fifty five, just outside of Vail. And so just need a motion to approve this. Have you guys sign the plans, scan this, get it in and get this into the February letting.
February letting.
Same. Yep.
February letting. All right, any further discussion? Otherwise, we will call for motion to approve final plans. All favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, final plans have been approved.
We'll have you all sign with a blue pen verbally in one of those, one of those boxes there in that lower right hand corner. So thank you.
All right, Craig.
Item seven.
So the the semi tractor, essentially this would be a twin sister to the one we got here a couple of years ago. Uh, it's in that hundred fifty seven thousand dollar range, just kind of making you aware of it. I think we're going to kind of sit tight until we get to get into budget and then maybe talk more about this. But it would be something too that would be included in there and we hook that up onto one of the center dump trailers and have a nice fleet of trucks to haul.
Say what price?
It's right in the hundred fifty seven thousand. I don't have the exact picture.
That's got like the five hundred Maxadyne, whatever you want to call it. Vocal.
It's a Macky.
Twelve speeds all max, yes.
It's automatic. It's got the M ten, I think it's called the M series or the M drive, yeah.
You better get that to their max all.
Yeah, the disc brakes, that that truck that we got, that last one I got from Brandon, we haven't had any trouble at all with it.
It's all good.
It's all good, yeah.
Max good dump truck.
Yep. Uh, the relocating the staff, is that something that's going to happen, I guess, or do you, okay? Uh, when do you think that might take place?
When it's most inconvenient for you.
Thank you.
We just kind of had that discussion this morning. We hope to get Louise moved, ideally December, but most likely January.
Well, I was thinking, you know, when, because that's what I was going to have Tim start kind of coming up here. I thought, what a great time to kind of clean house back there, get everything kind of, bring it up here and then reorganize some of the things as we do that and and find a spot for everybody.
I guess I want to move Louise out and then probably tack the flooring in there before you move your stuff in there.
It'd be perfect, perfect.
I thought that's kind of.
So sometime, and we were thinking too, that January time, February timeframe would work out great because then we could just kind of make this transition to.
Plans are lining up, so, yeah.
I don't think we'll make December, you know.
If it is, it's towards the end of December, so.
Yeah.
But it is, it is happening, I guess, is the main thing and that's where you want us to move to. And so what we'll do is we might be kind of going there and start kind of looking at where hopefully we'll take some donuts into Louise.
Measure the windows and, you know.
We're scheming.
Don't feel like, don't make her feel like you're pushing her out.
Oh, no, no.
She's fine.
She'll be up here mad as a.
She's very supportive of this.
Yes, she is very supportive.
Very excited to be moving over there.
Yeah, yeah.
She's open there, looks really good over there.
Wow. You gonna take me for a little tour? I mean, you took me there before we.
Well, I'll be glad to.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing it someday.
Absolutely.
And December nineteenth, we're having our Christmas luncheon slash safety meeting at the Manella Shop.
Oh.
So you're all invited. Um, Ziegler is always been generous and provides a meat and cheese tray and the rolls for that. So for the guys and anyhow, we're going to have DOT talk about CDL requirements, load security, some of those general topics. I saw a really good presentation last summer and I invited that patrol or that officer. I don't know if he'll be there or not, but it was a great presentation. It covered a lot of the things that we deal with regarding CDLs and heavy hauling. And then I'm trying to get something set up for hearing tests for the guys, too. I think it'd be kind of nice to do that, too, so.
Oh, yeah, we did that not that long ago. Exactly what's that?
So who did you have?
It's too late.
I can't see, I can't hear and I can't remember, but there's no trade-in value.
It's actually a good thing you're out here.
So.
I'm like, no, I can't remember exactly who it was.
Yeah, I just haven't heard anything back, but I know there's people that do that because we did it down at the shop one time. And I think it's a really good thing for anybody, you know.
Yeah.
Right, and they could just, they set up a truck outside and or they could even pull it inside, spawn down there, but so anyhow, that's that's December nineteenth.
Noon, noon again, noon.
I mean, we'll start the program at like ten o'clock or so and ten or ten thirty and and but we'll eat it, you know, we're going to have the soup and sandwich thing that we always did. All right.
Or competition.
So. You know, and the guy showed up with the suit.
I love that.
There was no rules, staying that you couldn't.
Right.
There were no rules and it was really good soup. But yeah, I think the 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 first one we had, when we did one of those was down in Buck Grove and Jerry came out and he was one of the judges.
Yeah.
Because we had, you know, a competition and we had Jerry Webb, who was the, there's like two sales managers in the state.
Yep.
He's the western one and a great guy came out. He was one of our judges and we had a couple of board members. And we actually had a traveling trophy. And then one of the guys went and bought soup. And everybody was upset.
It was all good until that soup won.
Till that soup won. He found out that it was bought in there.
That'd be hard, yeah.
Friday morning, what time in the morning, eight o'clock? Yeah, we'll meet here at eight, maybe even a little earlier if uh, well, I'm having the, this guy down on Thursday and then I got an appointment early in. So as soon as I get done with my appointment, I'll be over here and we'll go.
Wearing his little catchers, you know.
Yeah, I was going to walk in with these glasses.
I made it with Jean, I don't.
I know, yeah, exactly.
Took him all to the drive, I drove like.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tim.
We'll see you.
Alrighty, so, thank you, Paul. All right, uh, we have an update from Family Crisis Center. So I see you guys in the audience. Thank you for your patience, come on up.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Yeah, everybody come on up. We got, just turn those chairs around and thank you so much.
My name's John McMahon and I do development work at Family Crisis Centers out of our office in Spear Lake. Uh, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here and are happy to be with you here today. Um, our mission of Family Crisis Centers is to serve victims and survivors of crime. And we do that really in five primary areas or divisions and they're listed on your report there. Um, we want to begin this morning with with just a story and an example of the work that we do and and tell you about a woman named Nadine who was sixty three years old when she first came in contact with Family Crisis Centers. And to that point, she had spent nearly forty years in an abusive relationship. Um, and and the abuse started as verbal and transitioned to physical. And when it became physical, she considered leaving that relationship, but by that point, there were children involved. She didn't want to leave the children in broken homes and so she stayed. And um, she withstood the abuse, again, which was both verbal and and physical. The physical was less frequent than the verbal, but Nadine would say that the verbal was more harmful than the physical was. And so she stayed through that until the children were out of the house. And by the time the children were gone, her thinking on the abuse had changed over the years. It had become normalized, it had become a normal part of her relationship. And she also began to question if if it was somehow her fault and if she was to blame for the abuse. And so she continued to stay in that relationship. And at the age of sixty three, she was at her local church when someone from Family Crisis Centers presented. And at that point, Nadine had never told a person the abuse that she was dealing with. And as she listened to this presentation, she started to wonder, is this the person that I'm going to tell? And so when that presentation was over, she had approached that advocate and that began a relationship that really changed Nadine's life. So it began with emotional support and that advocate just listening to her story, listening to her abuse and listening to her talk about the abuse. And initially, it was really helping Nadine to see that that abuse was not her fault and that it was not normal. And then as the advocate began to hear about Nadine's thoughts over the years of leaving and exploring why that hadn't happened and listening to all those reasons, and by now at age sixty three, the reason was fear, was fear of leaving, but also a fear that she couldn't make it on her own. She'd been trained as a nurse but had never really worked. Um, she had stayed home with the kids her whole life and um, and now felt like she wasn't marketable and she wasn't hirable and she couldn't secure a job and couldn't take care of herself. And she was afraid of computers, which were new since um, since she had gone through school and didn't have any experience there. And so the advocate was was able to help secure some funds for Nadine to take a computer course at a local college and to begin to put together plans to leave to help her gain the courage to do so and ultimately to have that courage to leave. And um, along the way, helped Nadine fill out applications for jobs, helped her secure jobs, prepared her for interviews. Was able to um, secure funding for hotel stays and traditional or transitional housing immediately upon leaving and then moving into what ultimately became her own home, worked with her on budgeting. And we're happy to say that Nadine now has her own home that is free of abuse and and is living her best life at the moment. And so um, there's countless stories that fit, we could tell that are like that, but wanted to share one of you with with you this morning. And with that, to introduce those who are actually doing this work. So um, two of our advocates are here, so I'll give them the opportunity just to tell you who they are and a little bit about the work that they do in this area.
Thanks. Um, I'm Jill and I'm a domestic violence advocate here in Crawford County. And I have a little list here just in case I forget something. So some of the things that I do, um, helping to fill out protection orders. Court accompaniment and support there during the court process. Assistance with filling out private and compensation applications. Um, I do some crisis counseling and emotional support. Safety planning is huge and um, kind of going through options with them, what can I do? Can I leave? I don't have to be here, those kinds of things. And then I can also provide transportation to a shelter. Domestic violence shelter, if that's what they choose to do. Provide crisis intervention, get calls from the law enforcement, hospitals, those kinds of things where they're available twenty four seven. Uh, there's always math kid on call and respond to those things. It, we we get them out of dangerous situations and help them find um, their own home there, you know, so that they can, like, historically, you know, they can live their life free of domestic violence. Um, another thing that I do here in Crawford County is outreach and community awareness. So um, I um, I collaborate with the Crawford County Coalition. And um, I'm a member of the Rotary. And um, the snow, winter snow show, so, snow show is coming up and we'll be there with the with the roof um, for kids crafts. Giving the kids something to to make.
So it's Crawford, the only county you cover?
No, no, actually, um, I cover Crawford, Ida, Monona, Carroll, Sapp and Cavlin.
So do you have a physical office, a physical place or?
Yes, we have an office here in in Dedison and we have an office in Carroll.
Where's your closest domestic abuse home that they would travel to if you're in Crawford County suffering from domestic abuse?
The um, the shelter that we work with is in Sioux City.
Sioux City. No, we still have any places.
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice to have a closer.
And then can they take their children to that?
Absolutely.
That encompasses the whole family.
Yes.
Do you have shortage of space for people? Is that a, for getting people into the protection facility?
Um, I have not run into that. I mean, as far as.
Bed space or?
If to get to, if if we would take them to shelter and they're full, um, that rarely happens. But there's, there's other places we can call if if they are full. And then we do have some transitional housing in Sioux Center. Um, if they're available, there's a couple houses, right? Yeah, that we can, they can stay in for a month or so.
Do they have mostly stay like a couple weeks or, you know, that would just be such a hard transition, especially if you're in Crawford County, you can't come back home, kids have school, you know, that, it just, I don't have such dynamics of things that have to all fall into place.
Yeah, and that's something we deal with a lot. There's victims that do not want to go out of town because they have a job or like you said, their kids are in school. And um, in that case, sometimes we can um, secure funding for hotel stay, get them out of the situation for, you know, it's it's limited, but, you know, we can get them, you know, immediately out where they're safe. And then we have a housing program.
Okay.
Where we uh, we help them find a place. Um, we can provide first month's rent and um, deposit and then um, some ongoing support if needed and then we help them. And then we help them budget and help them, you know.
Right, you can't just let the abuser leave.
Yeah, yeah, that would, that would be nice. And, and sometimes, sometimes it does happen.
Okay.
Where the, they, the court says, no, you get the house.
Okay.
You have to leave. But then is it a safe place? Or then?
He knows where she's at.
Yeah, you know, that kind of thing.
He knows how to.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They, you know, just don't play, don't feel safe. But we have provided room cameras, doorbells, so they can see. And that provides so much.
That he was there.
Yeah.
Okay. See, that's not always, always, not always though.
Right, yeah, yeah. And, and security. They, you know, they know they're out there rather than they don't know until they're in, you know.
These numbers, sixty-five clients in Crawford County, you know, person just doesn't realize that that's actually going on. You just go.
I had a question about that number. Is sixty-five like the primary like person? Or is that like a person with the family that you're servicing? Like, cause it's a wife and three kids, is that part of the sixty-five or is it just the wife?
Just the wife.
So, so you're, you're, in a sense, taking care of more than sixty-five people. You're operating that.
Yeah, absolutely. And sometimes, sometimes the, the, the children or, you know, even grand, yeah, will end up needing services or, yeah. Or, you know, needing a little support themselves. And we're there for that. We do secondary victim services.
Is that what everybody in their life?
Yeah, 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 mothers, siblings, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the story.
Yes.
I have my own agency.
And I'm the bilingual domestic abuse advocate and housing. So I help with helping the okay areas around Crawford if they do have a job or they're disposable. But like Jill said, it takes a while. So we were trying to do the hotel stay first. And then I would try to call landlords and help like first month's rent and deposit.
I'm sorry, I missed your first name.
Ashley.
Nice to meet you.
I got a question for you. This popped up in your, when I said you were bilingual. You know, our immigrant community, which that's why you need to be bilingual. Do they, you know, because first of all, the thing that might inspire abuse is usually finances. And whole new communities, I mean, you're basically uprooted your family a lot of times and brought them. Do you find that we have, I mean, is there a little bit more in that community with this issue? That we should be concerned, I mean, find some way to make that a little less of a challenge in the future?
Um, I have only a couple of clients that do deal with that. And I feel like most of the time their abusers will use that against them. They will just use that, oh, I will report you or I take care of you financially or things like that. So it does make it a little more difficult for them because they fear trying to do a protection order or anything legally, they, they won't go for it just because they're afraid that it'll harm them. So.
Well, I know, I know our Latino community is very faith and family oriented, first of all. But that doesn't mean that the stresses of life doesn't get to them the same as everybody else.
Yeah.
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Something that we need to work to help overcome.
Yeah, we have another question.
You bet.
In fiscal year twenty-four, Family Crisis Centers served over three thousand victims in person throughout the twenty-nine counties we served in person and, and took over forty-nine thousand calls on our statewide hotline. So that's serving, serving all ninety-nine counties. So the report that you have there is broken down for Crawford County. You can see the numbers there in different areas. Sonya, I think they, the ladies mentioned here is the advocate in this area who works with victims of homicide and other violent crimes. So those services look very similar, but in different circumstances. It's being that emotional support through that trauma. Particularly in the case of homicide and other violent crimes, there's lots that comes with those that is unknown and unseen. And so the advocates, through their experience, can know what is coming. A victim that I talked to recently said that the work that these advocates do is like a light on a dark path. So when there's an investigation that's ongoing and media gets involved and then there's a trial, there's just all kinds of things that come at these victims that they can't see coming and can't be prepared for emotionally because they're dealing with the trauma of whatever that crime was. And so, so to hear someone say they're like a light on a dark path is just, it's, it's awesome and it's powerful to me. We do also work in, we have some advocates in medical clinics where can be physical or mental health clinics where the advocates work alongside the providers there to help assess trauma and help put together a treatment plan for those people and just serving those advocacy services. And that way, you heard Jill talk a little bit about the housing and helping victims to rehouse if their circumstances require that. And then I mentioned that hotline that serves the entire ninety-nine counties in the state of Iowa. So I just continue to be amazed at the, the things that are happening to people in our small communities in Iowa. And a lot of the details with things that we can't share because of confidentiality issues. But if you watch Law and Order and some of these shows and think those things happen somewhere else, a lot of those things are happening right here in our small towns in Iowa and it's shocking. And so I'm just continually thankful for the work that our advocates do every time I hear their stories and the work that they're doing with these victims. And at the same time, just so thankful to so many people in the communities whose support enables us to be sure that these advocates are available for victims when they need them. And so.
Is that where majority of your funding comes from? Is just from individuals or?
Yeah, so we have, we have an annual budget of about three and a half million dollars operating. And that number, just like everyone else's, it continues to climb. About seventy percent of that is, is covered through federal grant money. So the Victims of Crime Act of nineteen eighty-four established funds for victim support. And that's not tax dollars that does that. It's, it's fines and charges that come through the criminal justice system. And part of that is allocated toward victim support. And so about seventy percent of our budget comes from that. And that's both awesome and a little scary because that can come and go at will. So there's been talk recently and at the federal level of slashing victim support dollars by billions of dollar nationwide with a potential impact on the state of Iowa, about five and a half million dollars. And so we're always waiting with bated breath to see what happens at the federal level and then, and then how that impacts us. So, and then that leaves us, and then we have a, we have an office in our main office in Sioux Center that is dedicated to researching and writing grant applications. So in addition to that grant that comes from federal dollars, we spend a lot of time and effort researching different grants that are available to us and securing dollars that way. But all told, it leaves us each year in excess of a million dollars to raise through other efforts to maintain the services that, that we're, that we're providing.
I'm thankful that you're out in the community and that the one time when someone was telling the story, somebody was in the audience that needed to that day.
You know, my role is, a big part of my role is raising the dollars.
It does take dollars.
But I don't get choked up as much over a ten or twenty thousand dollar donation as I do those moments when someone connects with services. And I've seen it happen so many times. And it's just, it's awesome. And it's unbelievable. And so, you know, it's awesome to watch that happen and to watch these advocates walk with those victims through that experience. And so part of us being here today is to thank you for your support for our efforts and to renew the request for you to walk alongside us. And so we would request your assistance as you're preparing for the fiscal year twenty-six budget in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Do you, I have a question. Do you find that you get much support from like our local churches? I mean, you know, these are their parishioners and bits of faith and family is what kind of ties together. And to me, that, I don't know, you know. It just seems like a great place to actually reach.
Yeah, it's an interesting question and I can't speak to Crawford County churches or even churches in Dennison. I don't know if either of these ladies could, but it's been an interesting experience for me in visiting churches. Some of them are, you know, and I see it as we're all in the business of helping people. Some of those churches have welcomed me and us with open arms. And other, other churches have gotten hung up on denomination. And, you know, are you denominational? And if you are not our denomination, then we're not interested in partnering with you. So, so I think.
Sorry about that.
Generally, yes, I think that, I think the churches are supportive. And that is one of the avenues that we pursue.
Good, thank you. Nice to hear.
And when I'm working with somebody and we're looking for more resources and there's, there's things that we just cannot provide, we will check with, especially if they have a church home. We will talk with them and a lot of times, a lot of, a lot of them are very helpful. If, if not, not much, it might be a little, it might be, it might be food, you know.
There you go.
Just, just something to help.
Just having the word out there that you're there, whether it comes through the church or through, it, it, it's, it's all going to come together, you know, by being out there and people knowing how to reach out when it's their time to get their help.
Right, right. Yeah, one thing I'd mention too on that list, on, on the list here where it says the crisis line calls fifty-one, is that fifty-one?
Yep.
That is fifty-one that we know because we don't require in, in the, in the call center to, for them to give their location. Some people don't want to give their location. So that, that number can be a lot higher.
It probably takes more than just one call, you know, first time is just kind of a feeler and, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And you, since you have statistics here for Crawford County, I guess I'm just curious, are, are a lot of the counties equal in the percent wise? Or is there some counties that kind of jump out and go, wow, it's certainly more of a problem here than it is here? And where does Crawford County rank amongst those counties?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you exactly where it ranks. It's a great question. And I think generally speaking, you know, you're going to see higher numbers where the population is denser. So you look at the Sioux Cities and those types of areas, typically the numbers are going to tend to be higher there. Statistically, you know, talking about domestic violence in particular, National Coalition Against Domestic Violence estimates that one in three women and one in four men are victims of domestic violence in some way. So that works out to roughly twenty-nine percent of the population. So sometimes the question is not, is not where are we seeing it more? But, but where is it happening more? And part of the frightful part of that is how much is happening that nobody knows. You know, and.
Probably a bigger number.
Yeah.
I, I can't actually tell you that in the seventeen counties that we serve, Crawford is number two.
Oh, really?
That's kind of what I.
Well, I was sitting there, as he was asking that, and I was sitting there wondering, you know, I mean, I kind of doubt it's just a blue collar versus white collar thing too. I mean, because, you know, it's sometimes it's a nurture effect. You know, you grew up in a household that was like that. Like you guys brought up earlier, lady that, you know, she thought that was what it was supposed to be. And like, that's why. So I mean, I, you know, if we're number two, then I have to ask, I mean, we're a working community. I mean, Crawford County, most of us roll up our sleeves and they're in dirty every day. So I mean, that, that would, that would make me wonder if that's kind of, because, you know, like I said earlier, finances are almost always the thing that stresses mom and dad the most. And so I'm just, yeah, was thinking about the same things that you were asking. I'm wondering if there was a problem you could identify with their financial categories.
And it can be some that more people in this county may tell us that we're here.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks for being, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in and presenting before we can get our budget going and keeping it in the front of our minds what we need. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all. I'll say for myself, I, I live in Dickinson County and I've driven through Dennison before. This is the most extensive experience I've had with Dennison. It's a beautiful town. And I'll also say I'm a big person on, on atmosphere. And this, this room just feels very good. And I've visited a lot of counties and it doesn't always feel.
You got the right feeling.
So thank you for the work that you do, but thank you for making that just obvious to outsider governments.
We get it.
So thank you.
That's what we're.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thank you for all you do.
Jill, I'll see you Thursday.
Okay, sounds good.
I also emailed out the annual report for Elder Bridge.
Alrighty, we are down to Elder Bridge.
Good morning, everyone. I am Jody Presswood. I am the Chief Financial Officer here at Elder Bridge. I've been with the agency for about five years now. I appreciate you taking the time to take this presentation and to report on what we've done over the last year. We have spent in your county in FY twenty-four, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars on that two-page document. That's our county summary for you. Tells you how many units were provided and the cost of the services that we provided as well. Want to point out the return on investment. So last year, you were gracious enough to give us twelve thousand sixteen dollars and that got you a return on investment of seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents per dollar provided. So.
We like that.
I'm sorry?
So we like that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, those return on investments are great. So I wanted to just kind of give you a little overview of the agency. In the last couple of years, we have had a thirty percent increase in demand of our services, most of them in the food, food area, home delivered meals, congregant nutrition. After COVID struck, there was a huge demand for that food. The food insecurity became a very huge item in, in our agency. And that has not decreased since COVID has rescinded a little bit of its stranglehold on the population. So our, our agency has partnered with several other companies, agencies, private organizations, all kinds of different things to try to keep our costs down. So for example, we provided about the same number of meals for less dollars. I'm sorry. Was that?
No, no, I don't think anybody said anything here.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thought there was a question. So our price did go down a little bit. We've, we're saving about fifteen cents per meal. And I don't know, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're providing about two hundred thousand meals, that's quite a bit of money. So we've, we've worked our, our agency quite a bit with these partners to try to find new ways. One of them is finding a company that would create the meals and then distribute it to many counties surrounding them so we'd get a bulk discount. So one, one would serve the food and then ship it all out every day, Monday through Friday. We've also changed the way that we do the sites where we might have three days at one site and two days at another site within the same county to save money. But yet the people that want the service are able to get that, that service while we're saving that money. So we've been kind of creative on how to save money to still provide the services that everyone needs. So one of the programs that we did this last year was called the Iowa Return to Community. That one, we are attempting to roll out to every county. Right now, it's in seven of our twenty-nine counties. We are applying for grants and working with the state to try to expand that. Crawford is one of the counties that would be surrounding our location in Carroll. So we want to create an IRTC for the Carroll County and surrounding counties. And the IRTC program is the Iowa Return to Community. And that's for folks that have had an illness or an injury, say a fall, you know, medical issues of some sort where they ended up in the hospital. And they would like to return to their home after some sort of rehabilitation program, say a short stay in a nursing home or something like that. But our program is a. But our program is a short-term ninety-day program where we help cover those bases that tend to fall short between the hospital and the nursing home and their home life. So when somebody is taken out of a nursing home and sent to their home, sometimes they're not fully recovered and they don't have the ability to, say, make a meal or get their prescription or find a way to go to a doctor appointment. And that's where we step in. So, um, we can send them some home delivered meals. We can help them with personal care, uh, homemaker. Um, sometimes our volunteers will go and, and take them to doctor appointments. Yeah, there's a bunch of different things. Was that a que- question?
Oh, oh.
Must be a little feedback that I'm getting every now and then. So, um, so that's one of our programs that we would like to expand. And we found out just yesterday that we received a forty-five thousand dollar grant and it's over a three-year period, so fifteen thousand per year. And, um, so that is, it seems like a small amount, but it does help in allowing us to start expanding that, that program. So, um, and that's where places like you, um, are, are crucial to our agency in order to, you know, apply for things like that, draw down federal dollars, draw down state dollars. Because we use the funds that you, uh, provide to us as our match. It allows us to bring as many dollars into the agency as possible. So, one of our other programs that we have, uh, we don't have listed actually in our documentation we sent to you today, is, uh, our Grand Pats. And I don't know if you've heard of Grand Pats, but those are specially designed tablets that are for people of age sixty and older. And they're developed so that no one can, um, scam or fish the individual that has it. Because the only emails that can get through are pre-approved email addresses. Um, they can use it to speak to their doctor remotely.
They all say I need one.
They're very nice little pads. So, uh, but, um, it also allows our agency to video call these individuals. So if they're in a county that might be not close to our office, we can just set up a time and do a video call, much like we're doing, and check on the status of the individual. It also allows them to video call their family. If they don't have somebody nearby, they can still feel like they have a way to connect to their family. And as we know, loneliness in the elderly is a huge deficit to their health and well-being. So that's one of the ways that we try to provide that. Of course, one of the other, another way is through the congregate meal site. We also have, uh, a volunteer force of more than fifty people right now. And we're constantly trying to expand that. Um, we have a, um, Happy Mail program where our volunteers write personal notes to folks who are homebound to let them know that we're thinking of them. So they have something to look forward to in their mailbox besides a bill. So that's always a wonderful thing for them. Then some of our core programs, um, in the, uh, annual report, you'll see that near the back, there's a area plan programs. We have twenty-eight taxonomies or services that we offer. And each one of those is, is a crucial program. You'll see that on your individual Crawford County report, we, we haven't provided all of those services to your particular county. But it's based, based on the need. So when somebody calls in and says that they need something, that's the service that we provide. So, um, another of the programs that we're trying to expand this year, um, is the GO programs. And those are the Grandparent or Older Caregiver Program. Uh, that one's a new one, um, that the state is kind of focusing on, and it has to do with grand families. Uh, as you know, um, there's a lot of grandparents that are now raising grandkids. That, the number has increased dramatically. People didn't used to raise their grandchildren, the parents did. There's a lot of reasons for it happening, but that is a focus of ours. And we're starting to contact schools and things like that that have students that are being raised by their grandparents. We just send information home. If you need any help, we offer anything, counseling, support groups, um, where to find services, that sort of thing. So that's one of our new areas that we're focusing on as well. So did, uh, did anyone have any questions at this point on what, what are?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question, but if I'm a senior that needs food and I live in Kyron, and I'm the only person in Kyron that you're, uh, delivering food to, how does that process work? I mean, how does, who, who takes the food to the person? Is that through volunteers or?
It depends on the county, but if you are a home, homebound individual, because that's what it depends on, if, if it's delivered to you at home or not. So if you are homebound and you meet the state's definition of, of homebound, so you are unable to go grocery shopping on your own, you're, you're not driving around and walking all over town, um, you truly need people to bring things to you. If you meet those criteria, then we will have the home-delivered meals sent to you. It could be either the, a meal site there locally. It could be a volunteer. It could be the partner company that is creating the meals. They just have people that are going back and forth to different meal sites. They will stop and drop one off to you. Um, we also have frozen meals and we have shelf-stable meals. So it just kind of depends on your personal circumstances, but we weigh that with every single call that comes in. So what the best option is. Yeah.
Meals program I know is very successful here. I, uh, I know through my friends that are actually delivering them and it's just an honor for them to be able to help out and get those meals out. People are so appreciative of that, uh, balanced meal instead of trying to cook for yourself all the time. So that's a great one.
Yes, absolutely. And, and it's actually, sometimes it's a lifesaver, um, not, not in respect to the actual meal. But we've had situations where our people that are delivering food to these individuals help them medically. They will come to the door and maybe this is somebody they've been delivering to for two, three weeks and they have a routine developed. And then all of a sudden, there's something different or they're not answering the door. We'll actually call and have, do a welfare check on that individual. You know, there's, there's different things that we, you know, we try to keep track of how they're doing, not just with the food. We try to ask questions and see if they need something additional as well. So.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. A lot of data collected here on, uh, all the services you provide. More services I have to look at every year to remember what you guys all do. It's not just, uh, you know, Crawford County Home Care and Hospice. That, that becomes part of your data. How did, how, just as an example, how does that become part of your data in Elder Bridge? Is that coming right directly from our healthcare providers at Public Health?
Um, so what they do is, uh, if Public Health has somebody that they're helping that came through us, they will fill out what is called an intake and then they will send it to us. And then we track the units on a monthly basis. So they will send in a request for payment and a roster of anybody that's in our, um, our consumer base. And then we will add those units and then re-report that to the state. Cause we are a quasi-governmental agency. So, uh, most of our funding is federal, some of it is state. But we, we have a grant writer that, that goes out and they use this information in our, our system to say which county is getting each of our services. So, um, yeah. Yeah, it, it's called a system called WellSky and it's, it's a state system. So, um, we do, we do have, um, the same problem that the, the, the folks in the last presentation had, where you have units that don't get reported because they don't want to tell where they're at. So I know that we have, um, eighty-four hundred units that didn't get reported to anyone. We don't know where they're from. They're just, just this year. And it's, so it is a, an issue that we all as nonprofits have. But, uh, our, our system, our, it, it's a good system. So.
So this year you're asking for twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, that, that you'll ask for next, for this upcoming budget year?
Yes, and that is based on three dollars and twenty cents per senior that is in your county. Um, we receive the information from the state, uh, that you have three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two people that are above age sixty residing within your county. And that's what we base that off of. We spent fifty-five dollars and ninety-three cents per senior in your county this last year. So.
Good to hear.
Yep, absolutely. A great thing for our bucks. So appreciate the update, appreciate you do for everything that you do. And we will put that in our budget and, um, appreciate you every year.
Well, we appreciate you. You, you are so crucial to keeping us going. As I mentioned, we can't draw down the federal and state fund without you. So, uh, our partnership with you is, is crucial. So we really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, put that number on our budget. All right, next we have, uh, Stephanie Hendricks. Is that you? With the C-A-A-S-A funding.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad for being a patient.
Oh, and. Well, it's kind of probably good to hear what everybody else has. Well, you know, I mean, yes, and for, you know, I wanted to explain too. So I have been here, this is my fourth year. Um, Casa's been here for forty years and, uh, it's, uh, well, it's. I'll get you over here. You got one? Wait, one? And so I've been here for four years and I always thought Crawford and Woodbury County was the only county that didn't give to Casa. And, uh, Woodbury County does not because they don't give to nonprofits, um, which is disheartening, but it is what it is. But I also thought Crawford was. And I've been sitting here for years trying to fight, change a company. I have to stand, it's just kind of me. Um, and I was on the backend of trying to fix a company that needed to be fixed financially, staff-wise. I'm still working on the staff, but it really needed to get better representation and, um, just respect from the community. So it took me a couple of years. And I originally was sitting with the board going, I just don't understand, Crawford is just, the cases are coming out of, like, why are we not getting any funding in here? And I called, I'm like, I'm just gonna call. Why haven't I called for three years? So I called and they're like, um, yes, we helped. I'm like, oh, God. So.
They made me a little contract that we go into.
Well, you, you.
On the expectations of reporting and stuff.
Right, just like every other county, um, you know? And so I apologize that I have not been here for three years. So, um, I have been with Casa for almost seven years. I was an advocate. I was a nursing field before that. Um, and I came to help with people like my daughter that was sexually assaulted, uh, years ago. When I came, I just wanted to help people. I was an empty nester, husband and I do farming and I just wanted to do something different. When I became an advocate, I realized how crucial advocacy is in all nineteen counties that we cover. And without an advocate, there is a big wide gap of services of crime victims compensation that we can help them with, the healing, getting them into counseling, realizing what trauma therapy is, um, helping them along the way with rent assistance. All of these things sometimes get missed. If you don't get the advocate in the beginning and you wait until it gets to the prosecution, you're looking at a year. That means a year without anybody helping them. And I was one of those people when my daughter was seven. And I tell you that story because I want to help every Amanda that I can. Then I helped as many people as I could in Plymouth County, because that's where I live. And all of a sudden they were like, hey, would you like to be this interim executive director? I'm like, oh, not really. And, uh, so I did. And eventually I got pretty good at it. And here I am now as the executive director. This last year has been a boost. I listen to Family Crisis Center. We are, actually, we collaborate many cases. But we're different than anybody else. We are the only sexual assault agency in Region One, which means the Northwest Iowa, Region One, to get the sexual assault grant from the state. And so we get all the federal grants too. We are cut twenty-seven percent like we were last year. They did not cut us any more than we did last year. This year we get five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Our budget is only eight hundred thousand dollars, but over five hundred thousand dollars is payroll. And this year I happened to give a raise. In the last fifteen years, our advocates have not had anything. They get an average of fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour. I can tell you that's just not ideal. And you can't keep a staff. And that is the one thing we have not been able to keep is staff. It's been the biggest turnover since twenty-twenty. And then in this last year, I've had a lot of things happen. And June twenty-second, we flooded in Spencer, our main building. A building we just got with three hundred thousand dollars from United Way of Spencer. I worked really hard to get this building to be on Brand Avenue. We've been in Spencer for years. We've had a house of ten bedrooms and three stories high, and it was useless to us. We weren't using it the way the community gave it to us. So I gave it to Discovery House, it's a drug and alcohol addiction house, and gave it to them for free and took the three hundred thousand dollars and went into the biggest building we've ever seen. And we split it for victim advocacy. We split it for admin. And also downstairs, I made a food bank of non-perishable where we didn't matter who came through our doors, we were gonna help them. I also, in the last year, built a half a million dollar, um, store that has been in Cherokee for over thirty-five years. But this time I got to build it the biggest, the way we wanted it to. And all of the proceeds from our store go back into our operational funding to help find assistance, to help rent, anything that we can do, rent for our offices. And the reason I'm telling you all this is, these are great successes. And it serves a purpose. Anybody with a flood, anybody that is abused in any way, shape or form can call our store and get everything for free. Our store was meant to help people, not to gain profit. The profit is extra. But we need all the help we can get right now. Because with the added extra salary and I've had to close down two offices in Alton and Esteville, and with the five hundred thousand dollar loss in Spencer, I, right now, am trying to just rebuild and not take away from our actual budget. The one thing I am is a money person. I did not take FEMA. Um, I turned it down. They would have gave me five hundred thousand dollars at three point two five percent. Um, but thirty-five thousand dollars worth of blood insurance for the next fifteen years. It's not possible for an agency like us. So over a million dollars for five hundred thousand dollars, I can't justify that. So we took up our backup plan and we're gonna build some offices and that's what we're doing. For the first time since June twenty-second, we have walls in our office. Um, I have five employees, including myself, in this mobile unit, um, that somebody donated to us from Sioux Falls. So we could have something on our property in, um, Spencer. And I can tell you that it's not ideal for an executive director to be by advocates and for the advocates to be by my financial people. It's just not. But we wanted to stay centralized in there to be there for the community. Because as I saw Spencer in that upper community, the sexual assault went up fifty percent in like the next month. Why? Because people were desperate. So when I go for funding now, I have to look at where we are, have to balance our advocates. And I can tell you, in the last year, um, in Crawford County, we have seen forty-six sexual assaults, um, in Crawford. And I can tell you, we go by fiscal year and as of October first, the summer is hired already. Crawford used to be about eighth on our list of counties. It has now jumped to three. Um, I'm not sure what has happened, but the sexual assaults are on the rise. I heard you earlier ask if support, if we get some support, um, in your community. And I make my advocates always look somewhere else first before we touch our budget, because the budget isn't, there's not a lot there. I only budget about seven thousand dollars client assistance a year. It's all we can do. This year, because the budget was just so short, I have none. And so we have to, we have to go out and get resources. And our churches here do help us very much. Um, we'll call them and say, can you pay five hundred? We can do two hundred and let's pay for this person's rent. When we pay for somebody's rent, it means that they're in desperate need. When you think about domestic and sexual assault, two different things, but it's still assault. You don't know if the perpetrator lives in the home with them or if it's somebody that was doing caregiving. You don't know where that safety part is. But I can tell you, my advocates work very hard on helping them get what they need. We supply them with food, anything that we can give them when it comes to shampoo, conditioner, hygiene. We also will help in any way we can with furniture. I recently, well, we lost it in the flood, but I got a twenty-five thousand. I recently, well, we lost it in the flood, but I got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant and I bought a truck. So then we can start taking the furniture from my place in Cherokee and give it to anybody in the surrounding areas that need to have furniture. That was something that was desperately needed. Well, two days before the flood, Jensen Motors delivered it and uh, we never got to step foot in it. Um, and uh, I am so glad to say that two days ago, I bought another one from Jensen Motors and hopefully nothing floods. Yesterday it poured like cats and dogs in Spencer and I just looked outside going, oh, oh, please, please don't, you know, because you're not ready. The building's not ready for it to even be unflooded where your drains aren't unclogged yet, everything. You know, we are so very busy. Unfortunately, that's why you don't see my advocates here. You actually have two bilingual advocates in your county. One is Teresa Gonzalez. The other one is Yasmin Acosta. They are extremely unfortunately busy and they're in court this morning and that's why they're here. So and my other advocates, I have only fourteen on my team. We cover nineteen counties. Some of these ladies have six to seven counties apiece. We're, we're out of money. We can't go and give them another. So I hired a training volunteer coordinator in the last year. She's working in, working in the, the communities, also getting volunteers. Every volunteer hour is nineteen dollars an hour that we can use for a match to the state if they ask us for a match for funding for Voca, SAS or state. So you know, as a nonprofit, volunteers are very important. Um, and Morgan is now working in those counties to get those help because we don't have enough advocates for, you know, for the counties and for the clients. So now we can bring in and we can train volunteers if they would like to work with clients. Maybe it's to bring them to the county services. Maybe it's to get them food and we collaborate with other people. But it's very important to get more people on my team and I need more money. The one thing that we use is the state pays ninety percent back to our payroll. The ten percent has to come out of us. So I work very hard in the board supervisors meetings and I roughly get about eighty thousand to ninety thousand dollars in all of the nineteen counties. Woodbury County excluded, which is my highest content of sexual assaults, over three hundred sexual assaults just in a year. But you know, that, there's nothing you can do except work really hard, have a great grant writer and write a lot of grants. But the money in Crawford, I've been using the state money and it'd be really nice that I did know before. Um, if I could get some help. I'm asking for seven thousand dollars this year. The average county right now that I have done in the last year averages about five thousand dollars for mileage. We pay fifty cents per mile of the advocates. I'm very strict on when they leave the county. Why are you leaving? Where are you going? Um, because we have to watch all of it. Right now roughly we're using eighty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of mileage a year. It's a lot of money. And when you only have five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the state, I had to find other things. That's why I built the store. Um, the store has always been there. But we needed something to give more of an operational funding to keep the flow going. I have a great grant, I have two grant writers and one I recently did for federal grants. It is a high competitive world right now because we're running out of money and victim services. And if they take that away, it is a very scary thing right now. And we need all the help we can get. Um, and we're writing grants and you know, a lot of times people write grants just to get money in. But you have to write grants which, what works with your program. And right now my advocates were very tired, burnt out. Um, I'm doing a lot more self-care with my client, with my advocates, um, doing a lot more things. You know, for the last three and a half years, I have been the angry executive director. I've, I've tried to be that drill sergeant and I've lost a lot of staff. And then I had to look at myself. And this summer I saw the flood happen. And I saw what it did even to our own staff and the trauma. Some of my staff are on uh their balconies getting saved by boats in Spencer. Um, you know, a lot of things have happened. My own father passed away in August and all of these things. And you think and you realize and what's important in this agency. We want to be able to take care of not only primary victims, but secondary victims. Just your forty-six is only our primary. That is not our secondary. We will help everybody in the family. We will do whatever we can. Um, and I can tell you, our advocates work with them for the next year, for the next year and a half. Um, and we meet with them every week until all of a sudden it's every other week. And then all of a sudden it's every month. And however that looks, we will accompany them in court. We respond to forensic exams. We go to law enforcement. We have meetings. We do SARP meetings in your counties. Uh, we are very, very busy. And I apologize that it took me four years to come to see you. So um, that was my mistake.
So you're, the two gals that you mentioned, they actually live here in Crawford County?
No, so one, one lives over, actually, excuse me, Yasmin lives in Dennison. Yes. And Teresa is from Storm Lake. She is my BV county, but Yasmin is needing help because Crawford County is over the forty-six mark already for right now.
So how, how do people find out about your organization?
Me doing this, uh, going to colleges. So in here, I even talk about like the journey of what we've seen in the last four years, even since COVID. When COVID had, kids really got hurt because they stayed home. And when they came back and they went back to school, we saw a lot of sexual assaults, a lot of caregivers. Um, you know, we're sexually assaulting these children. Um, and so what we've seen is a huge advance. We need to get back in the schools. Your money will also help not only um, help with the mileage, but it'll help with the percentage for those advocates to work in your school systems. We are always in the school systems. We do the curriculum of second step from K through fifth grade. And then from sixth through twelfth, um, they have to do presentations with all of the students and work with the counselors in there. But the state, there's no funding for that. So I have to have funding somewhere else to be able to do that.
So just because I'm kind of trying to put the pieces together with the absence, you know, where uh Yasmin, is she going to the schools right now?
She is.
The schools are familiar with her so they could, okay, just trying to connect the dots on how our abuse, you know, because when you say how many abused people there are, those are only the reported ones.
Actually, I, I always explain this to everybody, like forty-six is only what has been told to us.
Correct.
There's hundreds out there. I always tell the advocates, you have to do outreach because if you don't do the outreach, you're not going to find people. And I said, it's not like you're trying to find a sexual assault. You don't want them to happen. They're already here.
It's like the story that he told, you know, there's somebody that's been suffering and didn't know and probably had heard the speech a couple of times before, but it just wasn't the right time. Kids are still at home continually, even though you went there last year, this year maybe you're gonna hit, it's that time for her to finally come, or him. To finally come out and say, I came here today for a reason and now it's my time to tell somebody what's going on.
Correct. You know, Jennifer Block was one of our advocates here. She went on medical leave for over a year. Um, and so I had to bring other advocates into this county to help while that was happening. Um, and so now uh, she's no longer with us. Um, and so Yasmin has had to come over here now and take care of this. Plus Carol Sack Calhoun, um, you know, so they're all trying to help and that's why we have that.
But Yasmin focuses in Crawford or does she have?
She focuses in all of them.
All of them?
Yeah, yeah. She is very busy here. So that is why I've had Teresa do the overflow.
Oh my goodness.
And so she's over here and then our office, we couldn't afford our Dennison office. I had it four years ago here downtown. And we just couldn't afford to do it. Um, and so I had to close it down. And then, so the advocate that was here before, she would have to go to, to Carol. Because we just didn't have any other place to go. We were finding that courthouse because now we're allowing our advocates to come in and, you know, even be here a couple of times a week, maybe an extra room. So if you have that, that would be great for Yasmin because she lives here and with the cases, it has been very busy. Um, and unfortunately, I might have to get some other people to help in other counties because of this county.
We might be able to help with a little space to uh.
Oh, that'd be fantastic. Can I take this from you for a minute? So in here, you say, how do they get ahold of us? So we have a website. It's actually our brand new one. God, I've been working very hard on it. Um, our website did not help enough people. It will be going live in about two weeks. Um, it's gonna be so much easier for people to get services faster. And our, also in the schools, we supply when we have grant money to, I always say, if you can't reach the parent, you really didn't do any good with the kid. And so we want to be able to reach the children at school, but also send them home with material. That costs thousands of dollars. So we send them home as much as we can with the brochures. The brochure has our hotline on it. They can call it twenty-four seven. Um, after it rolls over after four thirty to the call center to Family Crisis Center, they answer our phones and then our dispatch will dispatch our crisis calls.
I look at this and the same number's on a lot of different counties.
Yes, yes, yes. It's unfortunate. You know, in the back here, here's the nineteen counties that we cover, all the way from Carroll, all the way up to um, Lyon County. Um, you know, we're busy, but you know, it is in such need. Uh, sexual assault is one of the worst things I've seen in the last years to come, you know, especially the caregivers. Uh, you know, you, we work with DHS, the law enforcement, um, now the hospitals, sane nurses. We work so hard trying to get sane nurses to come into our hospital. You and your hospital, you have no sane nurses. If somebody gets sexually assaulted in your county, we have to actually transfer them to a different hospital.
Okay.
So help me, help me, help them. So you know, so if you think about if you're, if somebody got sexually assaulted, most likely we will be transferring them to Carol. We'll be at your hospital, we'll respond there, but we will have to go over there because most of the time they can't.
Haven't they been through enough trauma?
Absolutely. And every time that you move them from the hospital, you revictimize them.
Absolutely.
Not only does a woman get sexually assaulted, twenty-five percent of men have been sexually assaulted now too. And the boys and the girls. You know, we don't have enough offices. We have an office in Carroll, Sioux City, Lamar's, Spencer, and why am I missing one? Oh, in Storm Lake. I used to have nine. Now I have five. You know, it's, it's, we're dwindling down. The more I can be in your county, the more I have an office, the more efficient we're gonna be. The more we're gonna be able to work with the county attorneys, um, and even the police officers. I think that's what the greatest thing. Another county, Lyon County, found us a room. Now we're gonna work with them on a, like every other week base where people can come and see us right away there. I'd love to be in more places, but the money is dry. And I'm, I'm doing everything I can. I'm talking to everybody that'll listen. But my advocates need extra help and that's what I'm doing. And so the more I can be out here, the better for them. But I just want you to know what I usually do with other counties is usually that ten percent will come out of the county money as much as I can. About three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. I kind of split it. I also do brochures. If you average the brochures on what I have for county money right now, twenty-eight hundred is an average of what it costs to get five thousand um, English, three thousand Spanish at one time. I'll take that and divide it by the, you know, what it is. And it's roughly about a hundred and sixty-six dollars that each county will pay for those because they are, they're expensive. And I try to only do them twice a year. But right now, because of the, I don't know what's happening, but the sexual assaults are on the rise in the last two months. Um, and we're going through brochures like crazy. Um, so unfortunately I have to find a different avenue because that money will dwindle fast. So I want you to always know um, that we're here. Um, unfortunately you haven't seen me and that will not ever happen again. You'll see me more now than ever. Um, but I want you to know that we are working so hard to make things better here in Crawford County. I just know that we have to make changes because there is something that we're missing. You talk about, you know, just the undocumented and you talk about everybody wanting to have a better life. And unfortunately somehow, some way we put ourselves in unfortunate situations and it, it results to us getting involved. And I want you to know that we help with not only immigration status, we help with going to court, we help going to the hospital, doing the law enforcement interviews. We do everything. I, every office that I have has food in it. Every office has supplies to give them, but we run out quickly.
I bet.
Um, you know, we're doing the adoptive family that'll start this, end of this week where we're hoping, I'm hoping Yasmin found a Christmas tree where she can do here in town where they'll take and people will help buy um, the clients some gifts because we can't give them everything they want. But we definitely can give them what they need. Um, I also, um, will go around, I'll do as much as I can in like Fairway and Hy-Vee and they'll give me free turkeys and me and the advocates will go to as many clients as we can and give them a Thanksgiving meal. I can't do with everybody or we'd need thousands of money, but I'll do everything I can to help. I'm definitely an executive director in a one-man team over here. I don't have extra people to do these wonderful events, but I try to do the best, but I prioritize a lot of things. I had to change what kind of leader I was. You know, you can be the drill sergeant, but instead I wanted to be somebody more personal. I wanted to be able to be in the eyes of the advocate and fight for them in different counties when maybe they didn't have the respect. So I want you to know that I, I'm fighting harder than I ever have in the last seven years. And I think we are doing really well. It's just the problem. I always say, we're doing so well now, but we're at our poorest that we've ever been. And I told my board, we'll get there, we'll get there. And that mainframe building in Spencer, it, we're, we're there, you know, they're, they're building. I've got walls and I'm flooring at that spot. I might not have it downstairs and I might not have the food bank back, um, or things I really needed. But I'm gonna be able to give a space where people can come in and feel safe again. Um, and not only that, my advocates cannot feel so much trauma. And uh, you know, it's amazing. If we can't take care of ourselves, we can't take care of other people. And that is another thing we've been trying to do is making sure that the advocates have self-care.
Well, thank you for coming to see us.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Your timing is impeccable on uh, budgeting and things like that. So uh.
Well, thank you. And if you need any more information, please let me know. Yes, you got my card?
I will give you my card, just uh, in case you.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine. Just in case um, you don't hear what you need to hear, you have some questions or if there's something that we can do to assist.
Are you sure? I think, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, look at you guys.
I'll make copies.
Yes. And you know, that's another thing, you know, we, we've lost so much of our printers um, in the flooding and all of them were by leases. You know, so I almost thought about copying, but right now, yes, you keep yours. Um, but you know, to spend that much money on the brochures to copy them would have cost us just as much. And right now, we're, we're trying to fight just the leasing companies for, for insurance that we lost.
That a big job. I know exactly what you're struggling with and so.
We're doing, we'll do it. Well, we're doing okay.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keep doing what you do.
I will. So I'm ready to retire. I think we'll be about six years. Thank you.
All right. I forgot about where we're at on our due.
Thank you.
You know, when I first became the auditor fifteen years ago, we, I knew, I know someone always came and requested and I believe that we did. I don't know if it was five thousand or just a little under that at that time. I can't remember.
I don't know.
Michelle Carlson sat here last year for Casa.
Who was it?
Michelle Carlson.
Was that who it was?
Michelle Carlson's wife. Wasn't she here last year? Was that for this? I thought it was.
I know, I don't know if it was.
I don't know.
I thought that was for uh.
Was that twenty-third?
Twenty-third, no.
There's, there's.
Wasn't she with the?
Yeah, we'll add them to the.
Yeah.
To the list. I mean.
They all come about the same time.
Right.
Yeah, they all kind of blend together.
There's so many of these organizations that I didn't even know, you know, were out there. I know I think of that stuff before of them, but.
I just, that's, that's my thing that this is.
The service of dedication. Two that were here today.
I wonder what.
They all kind of same.
I'm always curious why, why?
Federal government money.
The three-year-old.
Okay. All right. Well, continue on.
Of all that reporting right there, what upset me the most is our money is funding Woodbury County again.
And they won't, and they won't fund anything.
Right. They don't fund anything because we're in Woodbury County. But you.
I wondered if I was the only one that was.
Chip in and we'll uh.
But yet they use it, they use it more than anybody else. Yeah, here's a free building, by the way.
I think you're right, Don Cherry. We haven't asked. Yeah. Give them something. I know we have. Been a while.
The name is.
I didn't think part of the way we pulled away because we hadn't seen anybody.
Yeah. Well, she admits that. We haven't, she said she hasn't been here, so.
She said she hadn't been here four years. I don't know what to tell you about it. First time I think I see her. Haven't.
Well, she's only worked for them for.
Four years is my whole term, so I guess.
Yeah.
What was uh?
See, we're good.
Patty Rich.
He's Family Crisis or she, I don't know what she, I don't know. See, there were two that were almost the same.
I think it's Family Crisis. I think she was.
Patty.
I don't know. And they had a little room downstairs at one time, weren't they?
Yes, she did.
Yeah, where we have our voting stuff now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Addie would take her off.
Were you thinking over at the CCC building? As long as they don't need, you know what I mean? They don't need a place to house anything or keep.
Tables and chairs and if you need someplace to go, I, I would say.
I mean, they'd have to. I don't know. I don't know.
I thought she was.
Louise would know. I, you know, we could.
Louise would know.
So our next item is the letter of understanding from our auditing firm. Uh, she would have a letter in our packet. Yeah.
Chris Nelson is retiring. I don't know. Are you lucky?
Who did our audit?
He's always the one that presented.
Presented.
He presented our audit. One of the gentlemen, um, Justin, Dustin Beanstra, I believe is, I think that's the name. Um, he's a partner in the firm or something and he's gonna be taking over Chris's duties. And he's gonna be taking over Chris's duties from the email I got from Chris. But anyway.
I think it's okay to get different auditors because people get real comfortable with what they're looking at because every year it's kind of the same.
Yeah, that's nice.
So I have no problem with somebody taking a deep look and wondering why they did this way all this.
So we have to do every hearing?
So it's a part of the find firms to do this, from what I hear. We all know with the organizations.
Especially, you know, with all the grants and that come through Crawford and all the different things. Yeah, there's a lot of requirements, a lot of, um. I forget what they're called. Anyway, gap requirements. Yeah.
Let's try going without one for a couple.
Make a motion to, uh, enter into the letter of understanding with the second old bill.
All right. Any further discussion? What is the dollar amount on that, Terry? Just so we have that in.
Um, I don't.
Wasn't that on there?
No, there's a dollar amount.
I just skipped it.
I skimmed it too. So it's, it's to be determined? How much time you have to make for it? Okay.
Right, because it's a little different. It's based on actual hours and.
And never mind about that.
Sorry.
No worries. No worries. It is, it's gonna be what it is. All righty, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Otherwise I'll call the vote. On favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Chair both ayes, so we will have one more year being audited. All right, citizens input.
Any signed full copies, please?
Gordon, you got anything? Seven, seven, four, eight, nine, seven. You have any input for our citizen input? Nobody's in our audience, so I would say.
Um, West Central was on the agenda for the twenty-sixth and there is not gonna be a move, a meeting in Crawford County on the twenty-sixth. So she has offered a couple, a couple of other dates. One is December thirty-first. Wasn't sure that this board was having a meeting on the thirty-first. Or if they would maybe hold their meeting on like the second, which is a Thursday, then we could do cash count. And then flow into a meeting. Something to think about. Anyway, I just, uh, December thirty-first or January fourteenth are a couple of options she has left. Or she would share the packet for your review and not join you in a meeting. All, you know, your choices. You don't have to make that decision today, but it's out there. I'm gonna give that to you if you don't mind.
What, uh, what you brought up, point, I mean, when are we gonna get our sheriff sworn in?
Oh, we chatted about that. Just, or you chatted to me about it.
Did research it and swear him in. We don't have to have a.
He's got to call into Christie, uh, just to make sure that how he's interpreting it is correct.
So we don't have to do the appointment?
He's, we, we might just be able to go ahead and just swear him in.
Cool.
So that we have to, we have certain timelines that we have to fulfill. He was hoping to be done in court to come down and talk to us in the citizen.
If that's the case, do you do everybody early?
Oh, wait, I was hoping.
I know.
None of the, none of the, none of the contested races are, no, no, no change of. I believe, you know, so I'd say, why not just do them all at the same time?
Exactly.
Because the info I found was a no later than.
Yep.
Info, not, you had to wait, no, do, you know, yeah.
So the only part would be, you know, if you had somebody coming in new, you know, you'd sworn him in. Then they wouldn't, you know, come to work until the first day of the year. And I believe I would continue in this seat first day of the year, even though I've been sworn in for my new term.
I know what that means. You're sworn in next year.
It means that Dave doesn't have to sit here the day after we get sworn in. So make sure I find that out.
So yeah, but we do need to think about that first meeting of the year.
Yep.
And doing the cash count. So.
So Colin will let me know today sometime and.
If required, especially me and Roger. I guess that's one thing. So we get him.
And Colin has talked to Roger and I have talked to Roger, so he kind of knows what's going on and, you know, is, uh, aware that we've done our best to get him in here as soon as.
Okay, with that being said, do we, as a board, even have to convene for that? I mean, you, can you and Colin swear in the sheriff?
Yeah.
Do we have to all be?
Colin can tell us that for sure.
Well, unless we all want to get sworn in so that we can just, uh, be done.
Right, but I mean, for a short-term solution of getting an actual.
Well, if you needed to do it Friday.
Yeah. I'm just.
He's waiting for Christie.
We're speculating on what we don't know.
So he called me to see where I got that information that I read.
Did we ever figure out? Did you guys get the full day off on Christmas Eve?
Yes, we do.
So that's the twenty-fourth.
Come back in life, you're gonna be a coonhound.
Some may say that's not an achievement.
All right, we've got rest.
What the need is.
Yeah, what the need is, come like the week, see if there's much.
Right, you can determine that the week before.
Yeah.
Yeah, even if we have to have one, you mean, is ours going after? Like on the Thanksgiving week? We don't have a meeting at all then?
No.
Next Tuesday, we do not have a meeting.
Nope, I know. I'm sorry. I'll get back to that. We'll be back for that.
Oh, okay. Well, that was what I was trying to schedule.
So I mean, should we want to decide fairly quickly, I guess, on the December thirty-first date? If we're gonna meet, because I don't know if Wendy is filling in her Tuesdays, since most board supervisors meet on Tuesdays. And that's what she wanted to do was, uh.
Right, or January fourteenth is the other option.
Well, the fourteenth, I mean, we.
Yeah.
You will meet.
Fourteenth won't be a big deal. I mean, we, we, you know, that's a big part of our.
Want to respond to her?
I would just assume she was here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice to hear.
Because if we get questions, she's a big prod, a big.
Let's do it.
The thirty-first is a regular scheduled meeting today. But either, we're gonna either have to really drag our feet and make the meeting last till like four-ish, four-thirties.
No, the end of the day cash counts stink. Unless like they're doing something different and closing their doors. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes they do that.
Day is that?
The thirty-first. Otherwise we're gonna have to come in.
Like the second, not the first.
Or second.
First is all.
First of the holiday.
Supervisors don't in holidays, we're coming in.
I won't be here. Come on in.
There's nobody here to give us any money.
That's right.
You didn't say that, right? Like the officials don't get a holiday over. Come ahead.
I won't be here.
Next week, the twenty-sixth.
No meeting.
So I'm guessing the thirty-first, I mean, there's a high probability being that the courthouse will be closed on the twenty-fourth, we probably won't have a meeting that week. So I would say we schedule a meeting for the thirty-first and we.
December thirty-first?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I'm in town.
That's all I.
Do you want to do a late afternoon meeting? Do you want to do?
Maybe we could, I mean.
I don't want you hanging out here all day.
We could have our own New Year's Eve party in the auditor's office. They always got a lot of food back there in the back.
Sure, if you open a certain drawer, they might have something I was doing.
That's just me.
I'm good to come on the thirty-first.
Yeah, we can't go.
That's a good point about an afternoon meeting. That way.
Yeah.
That might work.
It might.
Thirty-first.
Talk to Sherri and see what her plan is for that.
She's the only one that really.
I mean hypothetically, that'd be the worst one.
That'll be the worst one.
Yeah.
The rest of us, yeah.
We should send our banker over there to count all that.
So what are you thinking, three-thirty on the December thirty-first?
Real lay agenda.
To be determined.
Nothing the week of Christmas, nothing the week of Thanksgiving. Boy, we're kind of spoiled this year.
Yeah. Well, one day it ran last week. Our contractor called me and said we had a leak in our building over there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
Do leak and the new plumbing.
Well, no.
Rainwater, rainwater.
Fairway. Only leaks when it rains, he said, so.
Oh, well, it never rains here.
But he, he determined it to be a, a remodel deal where they cut must've, that pipe must've got cut off and not capped. So he went up on the roof and capped it.
Oh, it's coming in through a stink pipe?
Yeah. So, uh, he's, he said our roof is in very dire need of replacement.
I thought they just did that.
I thought they did too.
What? He was gonna get a quote to replace the roof so he can try to work it in next year. I thought everybody knew that.
That's awesome.
They should make a movie about that damn building.
They did. They called it, they did. They called it the Money Pit.
Yeah, but Money Pit Two. The commercial disaster.
The silver lining of this is, we are way under the one point five million that was.
Outstanding point.
Outstanding point.
And we're still are.
Thanks for the reminder that we're still doing better than we thought we were.
We absolutely are. We were able to use those monies for other projects rather than having it all in the one project.
Of which they are almost all gone.
Keep focused on all of that.
The projects or the money?
The money.
Any other citizens input today?
The move adjourned? Second.
All there.
Don't we never discuss that?
It is debatable.
And rumor has it, I could just say, I mean, the move that we adjourn.
Most people get tired and fed.